Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altschuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Awesome. Welcome to everyone. Thanks for being here. Just a quick, a couple of quick things before we get started. Just a hopefully obvious reminder, we're seated a little bit farther apart, just as a further mitigation, staying six feet apart, six feet apart from one another. And also, please note to the public health mandates, a face covering is required and proper masking is required. So masks with vents made of mesh are not permissible. Appropriate masks are here for you. I think they're in the back. So please bring one as you, as you come forward. Thank you again for your cooperation in that. We are here for our annual budget meeting. This is a meeting that we dedicate every year, which will go through all of our budgeting assumptions, and we're going to compare them to our actuals and then a five-year projection. Things can move and ebb and flow a little bit. We're going to run some models with Dr. Vine. And so please be patient as we, as we walk through that. We may also, as you see on the agenda, we may also go into close. So if we do go into close, we will do so at the end of the meeting, and we won't come back with any further action. We don't have any actions at this meeting. And just quickly, it's a gentle reminder that this is not a public meeting. Please be respectful and kind throughout the board meeting that occurs in public. And as you will continue to hear throughout the meeting, keeping our schools open safely within person is, continues to be a top priority. Alright, so why don't we move into our public comment? We have about 10 speakers signed up. So we've come to the time in our meeting that's set aside for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions in accordance with board policy. We ask you to state your name, your attendance area, or relationship to the district before you begin your comments. We also ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And we will see the countdown timer. We have a lot of business to do today, and we don't want our board's business to be impactful. I'm sure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with our board equity statement that states we will recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. Also, per board policy, the district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. No person shall strike, injure, threaten, harass, or intimidate staff members, board members, sports officials, or others. And please do not impede, delay, disrupt, or otherwise interfere with the school activity. We are committed to addressing issues and not attacking people, and we ask the community to do likewise. In order to get through public comment, if someone has represented your views, please do not feel the need to repeat their comments. Instead, either consider standing to show your support. And again, we ask that these actions do not delay the important business that we have tonight with our budget. And as a final reminder, public comment is not a conversation. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. Alright, so with that, first up is Josie Kroll.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Josie Kroll. I have a daughter in seventh grade at Station and a daughter in second grade at Countryside. Dr. Hunt, School Board. There will soon be a court decision regarding mask mandates, and it may then fall upon you to make the right choice for our children. I'd like to provide some information about this noxious requirement enforced on our powerless children. One, the study heavily relied on by the CDC for their mask advice was poor science. On December 16th, The Atlantic Magazine published an article by David Zweig entitled "The CDC's Flawed Case For Wearing Masks In School." Two, at least 79 studies show masks don't work or have negative effects. They come from the CDC and the WHO, from two randomized controlled trials with 14,000 participants, from papers by the European CDC, the Oxford Center, Harvard Medical School, and many others. Some of these studies warn of increased infection risks due to masks. Three, N95 masks don't work either. Both Bavaria and Austria mandated N95 mask-wearing in January 2021. Bavaria's infection case rate is the same as the rest of Germany, and Australia reported the highest infection rate in the world in November of 2021. So experience shows switching to N95 masks will not fix the problem. The exhaust valve is unfiltered on N95 masks, so they can't prevent transmission. Four, in fact, it takes a P100 respirator to prevent the spread of aerosolized respiratory viruses like COVID. The masks our kids are wearing are worse than worthless. Five, only 11 out of 50 U.S. states have mask mandates. There is no correlation between infections, hospitalizations, or deaths between states with and without the mandate. Overseas, England has eliminated their mask requirement, and Ireland ends theirs next month. Governments worldwide are moving away from the hated mask mandates. We should too. Families agree and are leaving Illinois to protect their kids and escape from this illogical and destructive policy. Six, children's learning and mental health are deeply affected by these masks. This is well noted and need not to be explained further to this audience. Seven, asymptomatic spread of COVID-19 doesn't exist. As proved by a BMJ study of 10 million Chinese, there wasn't one documented case. So why are we masking children to prevent nonexistent asymptomatic transmission? Why persist with this harmful medical theater? Eight, at least 30 studies confirm natural immunity is long-lasting and robust, yet it is ignored when considering the mask requirement. Why? Why are healthy and especially immune children are treated like disease vectors? This is a grossly unscientific and harmful policy, not to mention a violation of these children's rights, despite... It's such a great ending. Jerry E. Walt?
Alright. Hi. So Jerry E. Walt, father of four. Three of them are currently in the Barrington School District. So I think, I mean, there's a lot of tension, right? So I don't envy you guys and all the decisions that you have to make. It's difficult. There's two sides of the story. It's very strong on both sides. So I think what I'm trying to do now is just at least maybe help you guys find some common ground, right? So there's, there was a toolkit that was just published recently, and I'll make sure that you guys get this. But it's really focusing on the urgency of normal, right? So it's looking beyond, it's not an article that's pro-vax or anti-vax. It's really looking at the state of the children and the urgent need for them to get back into some sort of normalcy, right? So just a couple of highlights from it. And by the way, the authors are all who's-who's doctors across the country and some of the top medical institutes of the, in the country. So, and again, I'll make sure you guys get the toolkit. But it's intended to give everyone who needs to make evidence-based decisions for pre-K and K-12 schools and extracurricular activities. It summarizes the most important data regarding COVID and children of all ages so that you can feel empowered. Again, this isn't about vax or anti-vax. And it's, the urge is to have mutual respect as you have these discussions. But here's what it highlights. It highlights that COVID possesses very little threat or serious disease for students. Protecting the mental, social, and emotional health of students is paramount. To protect our children, an urgent return to fully normal schooling is needed, right? So I know we're working on that, but we got to get there faster. That's, that's basically what this toolkit's saying. And, and they're really highlighting that we need to protect the mental, social, and emotional health of students should be the top priority. And it gives some great facts of all the damage that it's causing, that we're currently under, right? Depression and anxiety symptoms have doubled during the pandemic. 25% of youth are experiencing depression symptoms. 20% of youth are experiencing anxiety. Approximately 2,400 child suicides in the U.S. in 2020. And the list goes on and on. I'll encourage you to guys do that because I know I have limited time. Talks about the harmful nature of school closures, and I know you guys are doing a great job keeping the schools open and kind of working within the rules and the boundaries. But I'm encouraging you guys to keep pushing, pushing those boundaries, right? Because it is harmful. Here's the recommendation, and I'll be done. Change the focus to supporting students' mental, emotional, and social health. Avoid escalating mask rules or other COVID policies. More restrictive policies increase fear and falsely convey that schools are unsafe. This is absolutely not true. It's more detrimental to the kid's health. Do not treat the unvaccinated and vaccinated children any differently. Children are not a danger. Encourage extracurricular activities and social events without fear, and I think you guys do a great job with that. Restore fully normal life in school for all children at the first opportunity. It's time to appropriately balance the risk to children's health. So thank you guys for hearing me, and I'll make sure you guys get that. But it's a great toolkit that you guys can help get us back to normal.
Thank you. Erin? Second?
Hi, Erin Sheckman here. I have three kids, one at each level in the, in the district. Unconventional a little here, but there was a video that was beneficial, and it's visual. We asked if it would be played here, but we request was denied. So I'm going to attempt to play it here for my few minutes. And if it doesn't work, then I will do it on the video, just on the TV. But it really is something that is not anything that can be listened to. It's more visual, because it's all of the vaccine injuries that we just want to make sure is aware and definitely never silenced the children that, you know, can't or will be very much endangered if they, if they were to have, I just want to make, anyway. It says a lot if I could just show it. But is it ever possible to turn off the lights? Because we can't show it if the lights aren't on. So I have to ask that. Does that request deny?
Pause the time.
It might be easier just to send the link.
Can you just send us the link?
Might be easier just to send the link.
Okay.
Should I just send the link?
Just send the link and make whatever comments you want to make, Erin. Are you able to give us a synopsis of some?
Marry it as a place. All of the children with vaccine, huh?
Marry it as a place.
Okay.
I know. Sorry.
I love to do something that's never been done before. Okay. Um...
Certainly send us the link.
I will, I will, I will, I will. But, um, come on. Tried to do it ahead of time, but couldn't do it in here. Alright. It's a, it's a very traumatic to see all the children that have been vaccinated with adverse reactions. And so it's just aware, we need to be aware that it does happen. And be careful about how we treat unvaccinated children and the vaccinated. Make sure that we know that shortness of breath, having seizures, and then all the misinformation, still saying that it's misinformation, but it is happening. There's an adult that had strokes from it. I would sing it, but you don't even need it. I'd say you just show pictures. I've been really, really sick since my COVID vaccine, however. Is that out of time? Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. Please send it to us. Very well.
Marshall McCleary.
Hi, I'm Marshall McCleary. I have four children in the district and one of the district. You guys have heard from me before, so I won't repeat what others have said. But I was going to talk a little bit about a natural immunity story, because I think it's something that isn't being recognized right now. I have seen a certain physician in the community who has children in the school district for years and years and years. And I remember when I had my first child, a discussion we had. And one was, well, let's see if you need any vaccines. Are you up to date, whatever? So, and she tested my, me for antibodies for chickenpox. Well, lo and behold, I never had chickenpox, but guess what? I had antibodies. So the conversation ensued as a natural, normal conversation on natural antibodies. And she said, well, there's no point in us vaccinating you for chickenpox and taking the risk on something you don't need in your body for something you're immune to. And I recently had some other blood tests done, and guess what? My chickenpox antibodies are still there. And my son is now 17 years old. So I know we don't know a lot about COVID antibodies, but we don't know. So we can't say that it's less than the vaccine yet. And the data is still unclear. So I think we need to start recognizing. And that's a person in our community that's seen a lot of patients and a lot of people over the years who has children in the district. And that is a real part of science that isn't being discussed. The other thing that came up in the last two weeks was a student talking about the responsibility and for getting vaccines on BHS-TV for all the students to see. And I was very upset by this, and I conveyed that in my emails that I sent to the team this week with some information about the risks and the benefit analysis that should be done, as opposed to pushing this and peer pressuring other students into being vaccinated for something that is still an experimental stage. And I would really encourage you to try to talk to the staff and encourage them to stay out of that conversation. It's really not something that I think that the district should be pushing on students. It divides the community, and it causes a lot of problems for private conversations that have already been had well a long time ago at home between the students and their parents, and causes conflict in the homes as well. So I really appreciate us stopping doing those kind of things, please. And the last thing I'd say is that I know a lot of stress is upcoming, and I really appreciate all the comments and the time for those of you that have talked to me one-on-one about things. And one thing I'd say is I brought you guys a lot of data, and not one time ever have any of you or any entity, I've talked to park districts, health departments, talked to a contact tracer at Lake County, I've talked to a lot of business leaders, not one time has anyone challenged me on any of my data. So if you have a disagreement with what I'm sending you, please tell me. Okay?
Marshall.
Thank you.
Sophia Eman?
Hi there. Brought you guys some visual aids my kids helped me put together. My name is Sophia Eman. I have six children. Three are currently at Countryside, two are at Prairie. My husband, Tom, couldn't be here tonight, so I do speak for him as well. As you are aware, we've been fighting for our children's rights and freedoms to lift mask mandates in our district. Once the vaccine mandates were enforced in Cook County, we felt compelled to do more to stop this unethical and unconstitutional discrimination before it starts to affect our children with vaccine mandates in schools. This past Sunday, January 23rd, my husband and I went to Washington, D.C. and participated in a defeat the mandates rally where we were surrounded with tens of thousands of other Americans who want to protect their freedoms. It was the most incredible thing I've ever experienced, and we wanted to be there for our kids and for everybody else that is here with us today. There have been many positive changes that have been occurring across the world to restore our freedoms. Just yesterday, a New York Supreme Court Justice ruled that their governor's mask mandate for children in schools is illegal. I have friends in New York whose children went to school maskless today for the first time in 22 months. It's time to end these COVID mitigations that have been shown not to be effective at stopping this virus. Here's a simple chart on how we can get back to normal school. Plan for back to normal school. Everyone, you have a choice to wear a mask or not wear a mask. Everyone can vaccinate if they want to or choose not to vaccinate if they don't want to. If you're sick, stay home. Do not return to school until you're 24 hours fever-free. If you're not sick, if you've been exposed to a sick person but you show no symptoms, you do not need to stay home. You can come to school unless you're sick. Testing, excessive testing when you're not sick is not necessary. You can test if you're sick and you need a diagnosis for treatment. But if you're just testing to test positive on a PCR test that has been shown to be ineffective and inaccurate, there's no reason to test. It's pretty simple. Everybody can follow it. We used to do it before COVID-19. So there's a lot of emerging daddy coming out that wearing masks for the past two years did nothing for protection. All of the previous people talked about it. I'll skip over it. People who have immunocompromised, at-risk children, children with family members at home that are at risk, they need to have a plan with their doctor. We don't need to send kids to school with masks to protect other people when masks do not work. I have immunocompromised kids, and I still send my kids to school because I know that that's more important for their mental health than keeping them home and wearing a mask at school. Running out of time. I just wanted to let you know that the following comments that will be spoken are going to be expert doctors. There was a Senate hearing after the rally that I went to where they had second opinions from all these doctors. It took place in Washington, D.C. yesterday. These are medical experts that have been saving thousands and thousands of lives treating COVID-19. And they recommend no masking, no excessive testing, and following their protocol.
Heather, I can't read the name here. Heather, the last name starts with a D, looks like, can't read this.
Heather Dusek.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You got to say your name.
Are we replaying it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Heather Dusek. I have two kids at Roslin, kindergarten or second grader, and a third on the way, another year. And playing a little expert excerpt from Dr. Ferrell, who is one of America's frontline doctors representing 17,000 other doctors. She's a pediatrician.
Whereas after 20 months of research, millions of patients treated, hundreds of clinical trials performed, and scientific data shared, we have demonstrated and documented our success and understanding in combating COVID-19. In considering the risks versus benefits of major policy decisions, thousands of physicians and medical scientists worldwide have reached consensus on three foundational principles. The first being, healthy children should not be forced to subject vaccination. They face negligible risk from COVID, but face potential, permanent, irreversible risk to their health if vaccinated, including heart, brain, reproductive, and immune system Natural immunity denial has prolonged this pandemic. And it has needlessly restricted the lives of COVID-recovered people. Masks, lockdowns, and other restrictions have caused great harm, especially in our children. And it has delayed the virus's transition to endemic status. Health agencies and institutions must cease interfering with the physician-patient relationship. Policymakers are directly responsible for hundreds of thousands of deaths as a result of institutional interference and blocking treatments proven to cure at a near 100% rate. This is not medicine. This is not care. These policies may constitute crimes against humanity.
Thank you. Anne Ordway?
What did you say the doctor's name? I didn't catch it. Dr. Ferrell and Dr. Rose. There were two doctors.
Hi, my name is Anne Ordway. I was a Roslin mom of three, and my youngest now is in her freshman year of college. Last year was traumatic for us as a family. I will say that the sports was heavily... It is distressing for my daughter, who's in a university now. She's not allowed, she's not playing a college sport because of the mitigations that were set last year. And yet, all of the other states that were open for school sports, they are performing just fine. Because my daughter is a diver, she was a diver, and you shut the pools down in the state of Illinois. You had to wipe down the rails before you got even onto the diving board. They were like silly, ridiculous mitigations that our kids had to go through, that other kids from other states, that they compete against as they come into the job market. And we have to set our kids up for their futures. So please, take these mitigations and the mask mandates for the other kids in other states our children will not be able to compete against. Just think about that. Now, also, we have something to listen to. It's by Dr. Christina Parks on the false positives of PCR tests.
Original question. So it's possible that you had a false positive PCR test. And I just want to address the PCR test, because many people don't really understand what it is. A PCR test amplifies the signal. And the PCR threshold, the number of cycles, each cycle amplifies the signal once. So we go from two to four to eight to 16 to 32. And you get to the point where you have a lot of amplified virus. So you need to have that cycle set low enough that you're only getting virus. Because if you have it set really high, if there's no virus there, it's going to amplify something. And you're just going to amplify garbage. And so your false positive may have just amplified garbage when you have 40 cycles of PCR. And so that's something that is really of concern, because we're having our athletes tested, where, you know, we have all this high, high mortality in our young people. And we're kicking them out of sports because of false PCR tests. Or possibly, they had some fragment of the virus, again, parts of the virus. The virus has been destroyed by their innate, strong immunity, right? Our young people have very strong immunity. They blow that virus apart. They still have parts, but they're not infective. They get that positive PCR test. Now they can't play sports. Now everyone has to be quarantined, blah, 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 blah. So this issue of the false PCR test really does need to be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Wiseman, quick. Again, I want to just try and keep this thing moving. There's, there's so much.
Thank you.
Brown to cover.
Jessica Spencer?
Hi, my name is Jessica Spencer. I live in South Barrington. I have three kids. I have a son who's in fifth grade at Rose, a daughter who's at Countryside in second grade Chinese Abortion, and a three-year-old. And I want to start off by saying, I'm a former teacher, but just came back into the workforce about three weeks ago. And I'm part-time kindergarten teacher now. And what I have seen in the last three weeks is absolutely shocking. I knew that my kids were disadvantaged by wearing masks to school, but I didn't really, really understand what that means from a teacher-student perspective. I have students that muffle their sounds, their words. Mid-year kindergarten still don't, aren't able to identify letters, simple CH blends, SH blends. It's actually a disaster. And I'm a former special ed teacher, and none of these students have an IEP, just to give you an idea of where they are at academically. It is really, really sad. And as an adult, having to wear a mask, trying to communicate the only way I know how as a teacher, it is like somebody is holding their hand over my mouth, making it really hard for me to communicate all of the things I need to in order to help the children. So I would like to also address a video in addition about masking from Dr. Paul Alexander.
I don't want to spend much time on this. There's more important issues.
Two things quickly. I'll touch a mask, and Steve will help me. To retweet something that Dr. Malone said about Dr. Gert van den Bosch, I think the key point he was making is, had we been using a vaccine that could sterilize the virus, that could stop transmission, we would not be in this situation. Whether or not the vaccine is needed. And the problem here is this vaccine does not stop infection, does not sterilize the virus, it does not stop the transmission. You can never, ever get to population herd immunity 100% with these vaccines. Impossible. Now, and there's also, Dr. Malone mentioned the data. We have some brand-new data from the UK and Scotland this week, the third week of reporting for 2022. for 2022, which demonstrates conclusively that the vaccine is driving, the second dose and two booster dose is driving massive infections in the vaccinated and it is a big, big problem. In terms of masks, and I know Steve will speak eloquently too, we pulled together 150 studies published in a brownstone. And we could say this, when we looked at all of the comparative studies, there are just two RCTs, which is one is the Danish mass study. And that had a problem to be published. That shows basically that the masks in effect.
Monica Casey?
Losing 15 seconds.
This is not a conversation.
I know, but I wanted to let you know.
Please, please go ahead.
It's Monica Casey. I have three children in the district, Grove Avenue School area, and our youngest is a sophomore in high school. I'm going to share with you Dr. McCullough's comments on vax trials and exclusions.
Well, the justification must be very strong. It is regulatory practice and principle always that groups that are excluded from randomized registrational trials are always excluded and contraindicated from the administration of the product and clinical practice, particularly during the early adoption and early experience part of the program. Without exception, we carry this forward. And the observation and the fact that the FDA and the CDC abrogated those regulatory principles and encourage actively and through many mechanisms had others actually coerce individuals for whom the vaccine is unsafe to receive the vaccine and then incur fatal and non-fatal injuries is, at this point in time, malfeasance. It's wrongdoing by those in positions of regulatory authority.
And there is no, there is no stronger or clearer contraindication to a vaccine or a medication than having already been harmed by it. So being subjected to have to take something again that has already harmed you in order to live, in order to travel, in order to work professionally is criminal.
Yeah. That was one of my other questions.
Kyle, real quick and then Dr. Corey wants to say something.
That was just one of my questions too. Is it, you know, logical to think that if you've been harmed by the first dose, then you shouldn't get a second dose? And if you get the second dose and you're harmed with a booster, potentially do more harm? And if you were on the seventh booster with that, potentially cause more harm?
Of course. You don't have to be a physician to know the answer to that question. A four-year-old knows the answer to that question.
And I just want to partner off of what Dr. McCullough said. I don't think people realize that all these people who had COVID were excluded from the trials, all of them. So we're going to take our five to 11-year-olds, that there's 28 million. That means 14, it was about half and half, it's probably more, 60% have had COVID already. So let's say 12 million have not had COVID. So if those 12 million had the vaccine and it was a perfect vaccine, it's 0.1400,000 myself, 12 children. What's going to happen to the 16 children, 16 million children who haven't, who've already had the virus, who already have immunity and we're going to subject them to something that wasn't even tested in that group? It's literally absurd. And that's the thing I would say, Senator, is that.
Anne, what's up? Heather Ewell. Could you grab yourself a mask, please? It looks like it's not a mesh one, so if you could put that over top here, that'd be better.
Good evening. I'm Heather Ewell, mom of four, Countryside, North Barrington. I wasn't sure if I'd make it here today. I was at a funeral of a dear family friend. She was beautiful soul. She died of COVID. Now, many of you might be thinking, I bet she wasn't vaccinated. She probably didn't even wear a mask in public. See how stupid those anti-vax people are? Maybe you're thinking, I bet she got the third vax and it killed her. Those people are so stupid to inject themselves with a vaccine that skipped rigorous safety trials. If either of these were you, I would ask you to search your soul and ask yourself why you didn't simply feel sadness or empathy for someone who died, whatever the cause. I would ask you to live in grace and love rather than hate and fear. My friend who passed away came here to America when she was a child. Her family was fleeing the socialist communist takeover of Latvia in the 50s. By the grace of God, she made it here and lived the American dream, coming here with nothing, earning a college degree and living a life of freedom from oppression. For over a year now, she kept warning us that we need to fight these COVID mandates, that we need to fight for our American freedoms, that we have no idea what it is like to live under a totalitarian regime and it started with small things much like mask mandates. She had numerous health conditions and wore two masks when she was out in public, but she fought fiercely against mask and vaccine mandates. This was because she wanted to protect our freedoms so her grandchildren and their children can live free in America. She was especially upset that our leaders in Illinois, like you, took away their freedoms and liberties of our young people and negatively impacted their childhoods and educations in order to protect the elderly and vulnerable like her. Mandatory masking of our children is un-American. I come to you today to once again ask you to be courageous and stand up against mandates. Your D-220 mandates will soon be found illegal in the court of law. Please make masks optional now before more damage is done to our children. They deserve this freedom. And I might have another one. Okay. Then I have a few minutes left. I just want to share with you, I personally know two young children damaged from the vaccine with heart damage. I know four adults damaged, permanent side effects from the vaccine. And I just think we need to make, we need to come out of our mask psychosis and really look at the data and do what's right. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment portion. We are now going to go through our budget planning. Again, we'll have a lot of back and forth. We'll just wait, pause a minute while people are partying and we need Dave Vine and Sarah to come forward. I think somebody has a speaker here. Is that yours?
I feel like this is pretty normal. I go to speak and everybody leaves.
We're all leaving it.
Hey Sandra, I'm so sorry to interrupt. This is Angela. I know that, I believe that you're going to address a couple of questions that were mentioned perhaps in public comments tonight or, you know, maybe on a greater scale. You know, I, I'm so sorry and I apologize. I'm not there. I know that this is disruptive to just pop in like this, but, you know, I mentioned that I have a, is a dinner tonight. So I don't, I don't, I would love to participate as much as I can and again, I apologize. But when, when do you plan on kind of addressing some of the issues that were maybe, you know, part of the focus of the public comment tonight?
I wasn't planning on addressing the public comment tonight. When we get to the part of our agenda when we're talking about the agenda items for the next meeting, I was planning to have a discussion about when we're going to meet next. I mean, when, what we're going to talk about at the next meeting.
Okay, then understood. I won't be on the meeting then, but I guess I will just, you know, put out at this point then that, you know, I put out a request for a special meeting, you know, prior to our next meeting, just so that we can potentially get something on the calendar before Monday, just in case the executive order is lifted on Friday, which is a potential. And, and just in case that that listing also provides local control back to our district, I think that it would be good to have a meeting on the calendar that we can cancel if that doesn't happen. And I know that there are travel issues going on, so I would suggest as a potential, maybe Sunday. I could be available anytime and again, I will be part of this discussion, but I did just want to, you know, mention this. And again, I recognize that this is not in the order of the agenda. I again apologize. But I had had a work to have planned quite a long time ago and this was the only time that we could make it work, so.
Okay. As we get to that part of the discussion, I will, I've written down the time that you're available. Can you, what are your availability next week? If you could maybe email that to me after you have to go? And likely we'll talk about the timing if we chose to do so outside of the, outside of the meeting. So we'll let you know.
Okay, like with a Google poll or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, my, my request would just be that it's before Monday because just in case this verdict does come down on Friday, which is what's anticipated and the, you know, the executive order is lifted, all of our discussions have been about, you know, creating a plan after the executive order is lifted. And, you know, I do think that time is of the essence, so that would be my request. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Shall we get to start, start out our discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you, board members. I've just got a short presentation and then I'm going to talk to you through some, some stuff, which I'm not going to have up on the screen, but I've got some hard copies available for you. But I'm just going to start with some info on the screen. The forecasting is always based on assumptions. That's one of the critical things that really drive what we're likely going to be looking at. And a big part of what we'll do a little later is talk through the assumptions that, that we have, that we want to use for our five-year forecast. We do this each year. This has been part of the history here in Barrington 2020. We talk through the assumptions, we come up with a common agreement and then we use that first year of the five-year forecast, the assumptions there as the basis for the budget that we build. So there are a lot of assumptions that, that we have to look at and I've listed here on the slide, some of the items that we think about. You know, big drivers around our forecasting as we look at what the future might be include enrollment, which drives staffing, any, you know, changes in, in benefits, obviously salaries, other cost trends are associated with that, programmatic changes, technology changes, changes in facilities or needed facility investments. These are all factors that come into play. So just as a reminder, as we think about our forecasts, forecasts can look very different based on the assumptions. And part of what we've done in Barrington is worked together to try and come up with an agreement on what assumptions might be. And as we look back over the last couple of years, we've come back with changes in assumptions. So when the pandemic started, we came back and said, you know what? Some of the things that we planned on are looking very different, so let's take another look at this. And so, you know, as appropriate, we can do that. But in the business office, what we think about these assumptions and we work with Dr. Hunt and the rest of the administrative team, you know, as we roll out of this meeting and prepare for budgeting, you know, around these assumptions, the communicating those that we anticipate what we, what will be coming in the future. Well, as I mentioned, you know, enrollment is one of the key things. I just put a slide up here. It's, it's small. You've probably seen this. This is in the Caserta report that was just recently done. This is the Series B projection, which is the, the Caserta most likely scenario. So he always does a more conservative and a more aggressive and then a most likely sort of in the middle. That's the Series B projection. And what this shows by grade level, and this, this shows as we, you know, where we are starting in, in '21, '22 with 8,156 students, that, you know, over the, as we look out over the next decade, you know, going down to 7,196. So it's, it's a slight move in enrollment. Now, this is not a dramatic change in enrollment, but it certainly is a change in enrollment. Now, part of what, what we do when we think about forecasting is take a look at this to figure out what are the implications on staffing for this? And it's unfortunately, it's not as simple as just saying, oh, for every, for example, 20 or 25 kids, we take out a staff member. It, it doesn't work quite like that. And what, so my colleagues have done is gone through this to take a look by grade level over the course of the, the five-year projection horizon that we've got on our forecast, what is the, the staffing implications? And, you know, as you might know, you know, if we were simply to say, well, we're going to have 25 fewer students next year, well, it could be that those 25 students are spread in 25 different classrooms across the district, which would not actually mean a, you know, change in actual enrollment. So what I, what I will tell you is that we do have, in fact, built into the projections I'm going to show you, changes in staffing, reductions in staffing that are driven off of this. So I want you to know that's already built in because that's part of what we normally do when we're taking a look at our projections, that we want to be able to build in any changes. In this case, we do have fewer staff members that we're projecting out in the future as a result of that. Is there anything, correct, Teresa? Okay, great. All right. Dr. Hunt, okay. You're good. Yep. All right. So CPI is another, you know, the part of the equation, one of the assumptions that we build in. And it drives, you know, cost trends that we look at. And what you have here is a 10-year look on CPI. So one of these things is not like the others. You know, you know that story, that song. Right. So this last year, we had a 7% CPI. So that 7% CPI, and I talked about it, I think, when we were doing our levy at that point in time, I think I mentioned that it was running 6.8. It actually ticked up instead of ticked down, which we often see right at the end of the year as a slight drop off. So we're at 7%. This is the highest CPI that we've had since the tax cap law was put into place. Just as a reminder, when it comes to levies, school districts that are, are here in the Chicagoland area, Cook and the Collar Counties that are covered by the tax cap law are restricted to increasing the tax levy by no more than 5%, even when CPI is above that. Now, CPI drives other things. So it, it, there's no restriction, there's no legislative restriction or statutory restriction on how much cost can go up. There's only a restriction on how much the tax levy can go up. So, you know, just keep in mind that other things are being driven by a high CPI. So, so we've been running that, you know, 1.5 to 2% for quite a while. This year, it's at 7. And so, and I'll talk, when we get to the assumptions, I'll talk a little more about how that 7% plays into the model that I've built for you on a base model that I'm recommending for us to consider. So, but just, you know, that's a, that's a striking change. And I'll also mention, we're not really sure exactly what the future will hold. And, you know, there are a lot of economists that have taken a look at this and there isn't a complete consensus around exactly what the future is going to bring. Now, there is a Fed target rate of 2.5%. There's some folks that are talking about, we're going to, this is going to drop off. This was a one-year spike and it's going to drop off. Others are like, eh, it's going to tail off a little bit. I've read an article this last week about, you know, some concerns around stagflation, a term that some of you might remember from quite a number of years ago. And, you know, the where you end up with a stagnating economy and high inflation, which, you know, it really is sort of a tough place for, for an economy to be. So, you know, I don't know what, what that's going to be. That'll be one of the assumptions we'll talk about in a little bit. All right. The other thing that's really key in terms of thinking about what the next five years will look like really is about where are we going to end this year? So what we do is project out and we're always taking a look at this. It's very difficult the first few months of the fiscal year, but then Sarah and our comptroller Jen spend a lot of time every month taking a look at our year-end projection. And what we do with that is we actually load up each month our actuals into our model and we take a look at a five-year month our actuals into our model, and we take a look at a five-year history that sort of balances out what is a typical percent of budget that we get in each month, um, either in revenue or that we spend each month in terms of expense. We drop our actuals in, and then we use that, rest of that model, um, and that history to try and project out where we think we're going to be. We then take a look at that for what jumps out, either favorable or unfavorable, um, what areas do we need to make some adjustments around the modeling on? Um, and based on that, we come up with an idea about where we think we're going to fall. So you've seen this, um, you know, we did this last year. Uh, for some of our newer board members, you may not have seen it then, but it's something that we've been doing over the last couple of years, and we continue to refine and improve. So, uh, what I have for you here are just four quick points, um, and I'll show you another slide that's got, you know, sort of where we're thinking that we're going to end up. Uh, so, uh, our projection for this year includes a, a pickup on a, a surplus of 100, about $166,000, which is a result of the federal nutrition program extension. So there's a program called the Seamless Summer Option. It's a, a partner program to the National School Lunch Program. All falls under the federal food, uh, benefit programs. And, uh, even though it wasn't summer, uh, the federal government extended the Seamless Summer Program throughout the year, which provided meals for, uh, free meals for all students. And we're projecting $166,000 surplus. Board members, please keep in mind that's not, um, a, a unrestricted surplus. That 166 is money that needs to, uh, be spent on our food service program in the future. So, uh, that's not just money that we can do whatever we want with. Uh, next point, uh, we were pleasantly surprised with a reduced proration, so from the, from the state government regarding transportation reimbursement. So proration is something that the, that the state does when it doesn't have enough money to actually pay all of what it's supposed to. So, uh, they'll say, well, you know, well, we don't have enough money, so we're going to prorate you at 60%. So, uh, and if they come back and say, oh, you know, we can actually give you 90% because we had more money come in, uh, the amount that they, that they were trimming us by got smaller. So that's what happened. This, uh, we budgeted based on where we had been with the state and what we're anticipating the state to be able to provide. And they came back and said, we're not going to prorate you as much, so you're going to get more money. It was about a million dollars. Uh, so, yeah, it was a, it was a wonderful, unexpected.
Real money.
Surprise. So that was good. Uh, we do have, um, all of our ESSER expenses in this year. You know, we're just projecting that we're receiving all the revenue and we're spending all the expense. Those net out to zero. Um, and, you know, we will have some ESSER spending next year. Again, that will net out to zero. That's got no fund balance impact on our, on our budget, uh, because it's not going to increase or decrease our fund balance. Uh, we're just always projecting those to balance out. Uh, the last thing for this year, there's a variety of other areas. Um, you know, so it, we actually, there's 226,000 we're noting here, but what you'll see if you add these numbers up, it, it's a little bit below what the next, what you'll see on the next slide in terms of the variance, uh, favorable variance from our budgeted surplus. Uh, but, you know, some of these, you know, there were some larger chunks that we identified that totaled 226. And then there's a little bit of this and that, uh, that happens after that. So, what does that all lay out? I know the, the print here is small, uh, but, uh, what that lays out, uh, to right now is a, a favorable, uh, 1.8 million variance to our ending surplus. So total surplus being about 4.3 million. So that's, uh, favorable from where we were, we were budgeting that we would end this year. So that's good news.
And we have this in our.
Yes, it's in, yes.
Make sure we.
Yep.
Last page.
Yep. Mm-hmm. So, so that, that's it in terms of the setup on the slides for you. Okay? So what I'd like to do, unless there's questions on what I've talked about so far, I'd like to, to switch and talk a little bit about, um, some of the assumptions that, um, that we've got for this year. So attached within, uh, board docs was where we ended last year with our, our assumption list. Um, so, uh, but what I've provided for you is, uh, in the handout, is a pre, pre-meeting assumption. So that, this is my take at the assumptions right now that are built into the model I'm going to show you in just a little bit. But, right, and so what I'd like to do is to talk you through what I have here, and then I'll show you the results of the model. Talk through some of the modeling I've done. And then I'm going to suggest that, once we're done with that, let's come back and we can talk about, are there changes that you would like to see on the assumptions that I can take away and then model for you, and which is similar to what we've done in the past, um, where if there were changes from the board around the assumptions, I'll, I'll take them away and I'll bring back to you that refreshed assumption list along with what that model looks like. Does that sound good?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right. So, um, so what you'll see, if you take a look at this assumption list, you know, right across the top, we've got, you know, the CPI assumption. So you can see, you know, this, this budget year, we're at 2.3, um, then 1.4, that was the levy that the board just approved, uh, was, uh, with a CPI of 1.4 plus new construction. This next year, it's going to be 7%. Again, you know, the, the option available to the board at most would be able to do a 5% increase plus new construction. That would be the most you would be able to do under the law. So even though CPI is exceeding that. So, um, so what I have modeled is a CPI of 7%, where it's capped at the 5, right? So the model is reflective of 5 plus new construction.
Is it 7.5? That's 5?
There would be about, it's about.
That's the estimate?
It's about.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know, Barry, that, that second line, I almost deleted it on there. I mean, the, the percentage varies, you know, based on new construction, but now it's about a half a percent. So, and that's what you saw, um, this last year on the levy where we had 1.4, um, was the, the cap. And I told you what I'm projecting we will actually receive would be 1.9%, which is reflective of new construction. But I'll also tell you that if you look at the new construction, um, assumption on this sheet, I'm actually suggesting that we move forward with 18 million instead of 50. It's a little bit larger. And that's based off of a review that I recently did on, uh, the last decade of new construction numbers. And some years are really big, some years are pretty small. I think that it's probably reasonable for us to assume that it might be just a little bit higher than where we were. Now, this does not have an enormous impact on our overall levy, uh, but it does have an impact on the overall levy. So, uh, out years on CPI, I, I just put in the, sort of the Fed target rate. Uh, you know, I think this is sort of fair game, you know, for the board to think about. Do we believe that it's going to be above 2.5% at 2.5% or below 2.5%? Um, what I can tell you the impact is, is that if we assume that we levy at the CPI level, um, if we were to change FY '25, that number that's there, there's a lagging effect because when, when that, um, CPI happens, then it's the following year's levy, and then it starts to play out during the calendar year after that. So there's a lagging effect on that. Um, of course, I can also model different, yeah, I can model whatever CPI we want or whatever the levy assumption is that we really want to do, which is what this actually does and drive to the model. But right now, I've got that in at 2.5%. Um, our, our ta, our tax rate collection during the pandemic, we had ratcheted that back. Um, right now, I think we're, I'm comfortable saying I think we're going to be at 99% uh, plus, um, with our, our collection rate. So, uh, we, we're seeing a little bit slow collection, um, from some counties, but we don't have a reason to believe that we're not going to be back where we historically had been, right, running right about 99%. We talked about new growth. Uh, the, the next, uh, next three lines on here are salary lines. So, uh, what I do when I'm modeling, uh, salaries is I drop in the actual increases if they've been negotiated or if they are known in advance. So typically, if we have a collective bargaining agreement with our support staff or with our teachers, we may have in front of us a, a pre-negotiated increase. Um, it's either based off of CPI as it was with, with teachers or it may just be a, a firm number. Absent an agreement, what I model is CPI for, for salary increases. So what you can see is that, you know, teachers for FY '23, we have an agreement of 70% of CPI plus staff. So that's what I've modeled in for FY '23. Uh, for administrators and, and our, our classified staff, I've put in CPI. Um, then, as we go to the out years, it's all at a CPI assumption. Now, there is a timing issue. So if you're like, hey, Dave, wait a second, you know, that, um, uh, the two, first 2.5% is not until FY '25. Why are you showing that in FY '24? It's actually because we find out, it's when we find out about the CPI and how it plays out in the levy stuff. But this is similar to what we've done before. It's just a modeling timing issue. But that 2.5% in FY '25 would drive the salaries for FY '24. So, um, so what I've got is 2.5% in all the out years. Now, salaries, um, and benefits are the big, you know, that's a bulk of our expense structure, um, you know, running about three-quarters of our expense structure. Um, changes there actually, um, have a big impact on what the projections will look like. So, you know, the, the difference between 2.5% and 5% is pretty significant over time. So just, so you've got that, you know, sort of that idea. Uh, Sarah, I think we're at about, uh, our salary structure about 96, 97 million.
Yeah.
Just on salaries. So when you start to think about that, um, you know, that, a 1% change drives about a million dollars in, in salary, depending on the, you know, as we look at, it's not completely true, because some of that is some stipends that don't actually change with the salary increase. But it's an easy way to think about it. A 1% change, up or down, will drive about a $1 million change in fund balance, and it compounds each year. So if you, if you change $1 million next year, um, up, the year after that, it's another million dollars plus a little more of an increase. And the year after that, it's another million dollars plus a little bit of an increase. So you're really looking at probably somewhere between 5 and 5.5 million dollars of additional costs to, to fund balance over the five-year projection. So, just wanted to remind you how that sort of plays out. Um, medical insurance, I've got, you know, our assumption, um, you know, based on our agreements is, uh, really with our, uh, one of our collective bargaining groups is capping that at 3%. Uh, I will tell you that, you know, this year, I was actually on a call today, Sarah and I joined in with NIHIP, which is our insurance cooperative, and actually not a, really a great year. Um, so, um, the increases are running around 8 to 9% um, on our NIHIP insurance. Um, so this is the preliminary number, um, but sadly, what we're hearing from NIHIP is that they're not actually anticipating that a little more time till we do the final is really going to benefit us, um, as a co-op. So, you know, so those costs, and we've had a couple of good years where costs have been low, uh, or not too bad of an increase, and this is actually across the co-op is, has been unfavorable. Again, this is some of the things that, you know, the inflation sometimes drives some of this up. Obviously, claims activity is a big part of it, uh, but, uh, inflation costs can also push some of that up.
To be clear, for an assumption standpoint, Dave?
3% is my assumption.
Absolutely. Thank you. Because it's in the contract that way, and we'd be.
That's correct. We'll be looking at plan design changes. This is part of what the insurance committee work will be doing, um, as we, you know, as we look at those meetings coming up and get a better view as to what some of the options are in front of us. And the co-op is also thinking about some changes that it will make as a co-op that will also reduce some of the costs. So, um, so more to come on that.
And maybe just on one other quick reminder is that the performance in the co-op, every district that participates in a co-op, their performance is what impacts what their, what their.
That's correct.
Raisin rates would be. So, but if everybody's having a bad year, then that's just going to compound against everybody, but.
Right. And it is, it is banded. So, you know, if the average co-op is running 8% and, and you happen to be way below in terms of your claims activity, you might be at 4%. Uh, but if you also have a lot worse, um, claims activity than average, if the co-op average is 8%, you might be at 12%. And there actually are districts, when you look at the preliminary numbers, there are districts at both ends of that extreme. Actually, I think, I think there's at least one district that had like a 15% increase.
There was a couple with 17.
Yeah. So, so, you know, it's always nice to know it could be worse, but, um, you know, it's only mildly comforting.
Right.
All right. Uh, the next line on here is the TRS cost shift. This is something that, uh, the board has talked about over a number of years, that, you know, there always is some rumblings about the possibility of a pension cost shift being legislated. Um, what we have normally done, which is what I had, what, what I have reflected on here, is consistent with what we did last year, which is putting out in the last few years of our projection, a minor cost shift. Um, so it's not a major cost shift, but it is reflecting that there's a possibility that we could be looking at some additional costs that would come our way. Our belief is that if a cost shift happens, that it would be phased in. It wouldn't be a one fell swoop and the whole thing drops on top of you. But weird things sometimes happen in Springfield, so, uh, but this is what we think is a reasonable assumption around a cost shift. Uh, the, the next line, uh, down is, uh, so I, you know, don't have any, any FTE change assumptions. I did build in FTE, again, I, I didn't write it here. I do have FTE assumptions that are driven off of enrollment that are built into the model already. So there are some reductions for that. I do not have any additional FTE changes up or down built into the model. So that does have an impact on, on, on the results. Um, the debt service extension base, uh, that, um, moves along with the CPI. So it's, it follows the same rules as the levy. So it goes up each year by, uh, the Consumer Price Index with a cap of 5%. So that is, um, that's reflected in here, um, presuming that we're going to issue that. Generally speaking, that does not have an operating impact, uh, but, uh, more to come on that. Uh, the next line is, um, the investment rate of return. Well, it's, it's been in the toilet, uh, for a number of years here, and that really stinks. But what we're seeing is, along with inflation, um, you know, noise from the Fed about increasing, um, uh, the interest rate, so the federal funds rate. So what I have in here is some assumptions around, uh, what we think the portfolio might be. Now, our portfolio is not all invested at the beginning of the year at a one-year, you know, a one-year rate. So we have some, uh, investments that are a little bit longer. So we ladder those out. Um, I've worked along with, um, with our advisor on what might we anticipate in terms of interest rate yields as we look out over the, the next handful of years. Uh, so this, certainly in the out years, um, has a real favorable impact on our revenue stream. So, um, so I've got that built in.
Dave, just to clarify, the investment rate of return is for the D sub bonds?
No, it is for any, uh, uh, it's for all of our investments, all of our, all the money that we have in the bank or in an investment.
Oh, okay.
So that, so that includes, uh, cash that's fairly liquid that's sitting in, you'd think of like a checking account that's basically yielding zero, along with some longer, you know, some investments that might be three months, six months, 12 months, two years, three years. So it's that blend of all of those things, some at zero or close to zero, uh, along with some things that are not. Now, you know, as we look back over the last couple of years, it was hard to find something that wasn't close to zero. Um, and even now, as we look at some of the investment options, um, if you want to see a little bit higher, um, interest rate, you actually have to take a, a longer investment period. So we do have, you know, we, we, you know, we have some things that are short, we have some things that are long. And our, our belief here with this assumption is that the investing environment will get better for us, and we will see both an increase in short and long-term rates. And with our portfolio mix, that everything's going to go up until we're in the last year looking at about a 1.7% average portfolio yield.
So that's total investments, not just D sub?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Now, the, the next section gets into the ed fund. Um, and, you know, the, the revenue assumptions, which are the, uh, the, the next five lines that are on there under ed fund, uh, you've seen a lot of zeros. I mean, generally, what we've assumed is that we're not going to see, uh, from the state of Illinois, um, big changes in, um, in revenue. So the CPPRT is the Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax. Uh, this is based off of economic activity within the state. Um, and, uh, you know, it's hard to predict exactly what's going to happen with that. The, you know, generally, we've used a 0% increase absent, um, affirmative knowledge that something's going to be something's going to be different. And right now, I can't tell you that the Illinois state economy is going to be booming over the next five years, and we should assume an uptick in the CPPRT. The EBF proration, this is the evidence-based funding. This is really a question of, will we get all of the evidence-based funding that we're anticipating? So if state economic activity really gets worse, and the state has even less money for education, there's the possibility that we would not get our hold harmless guaranteed amount of money from the state of Illinois. The flip side of that is, if the state continues to invest new money in, as it had pledged to put in $350 million each year, additional funds into the evidence-based funding model, because of the tiering of the EBF model, and we've talked about some of that in some other settings, but without getting into too much detail, if they put 350 million new dollars into the funding model, we'll get about 11,000 to 15,000 of new money. So, so I've just got that at zero because, you know, I mean, I'll take the 11,000 to 15,000, don't get me wrong, but it's not going to drive materially different results on a funding model. So, state aid, you know, the categorical growth, you know, these are the mandated categoricals, primarily transportation and special ed. So we're assuming those are not going to grow. I do have within the transportation model, built in automatically, as expenses go up with transportation, we will get a little bit of additional transportation reimbursement because those are connected but lagged by a year. But outside of that, I'm not assuming that the proration that benefited us a million dollars this year is going to continue. I'm not assuming that we're going to see big changes in that. I don't have any knowledge that, you know, and if you look at the state history, it bounces around up and down. So it's a little tough to predict that, but, you know, generally, we have assumed no material change in, in MCAT funding. Same thing with our federal, you know, with our federal growth. You know, those grant programs, and generally, it's important to keep in mind on grant programs that come from the federal government, whatever the allocation of funds is, you then build an expense structure that matches that. So if the revenue goes up, you, you have to use it for grant purposes, and there are supplement-not-supplant rules, which I'll explain in just a moment, which means that if revenue goes up, the expenses go up along with it, and they sort of net out to the same zero at the end of the day. And supplement-not-supplant means that when you get new grant dollars, you can't replace local spending with the federal money that you get. You actually have to supplement what you're already doing. You have to do more than what you're already doing. You can't supplant or replace your local spending. So if we get a million dollars more of federal money, it doesn't mean that we can avoid a million dollars of local spending and drive a million dollar surplus on our budget. It means that if we really want that additional million dollars, we have to come up with another million dollars to spend. So that's, that's how that works. So there, that, that assumption doesn't really, like, regardless of how we did that, I would actually drive expenses to match the revenue, so it's not going to affect operating results. All right, the next section is on the expenditures. What you can see is that in FY '23, it's next year, and I'll tell you, it's because of the increase that we're seeing on the salary side, because that's so high, because we've got contracts that are connected to CPI. It drives a lot more expense in FY '23. So I've actually zeroed out increases in, in supplies, purchase services, and capital for next year. And you will see that both in ed and in O and M transportation board, you'll be, we've talked about a, a contract extension with BTC at 5.4%. And quite frankly, given that it's a 7% CPI, I'm feeling pretty good about that. That's a below CPI renewal. I mean, I don't love, maybe you're wrong, I don't love 5.4, but, but that's actually feeling pretty good compared to seven. So obviously, I increased the purchase service line in transportation by 5.4, reflective of that proposal that you'll have opportunity to consider at your next board meeting. But otherwise, I've zeroed that out, saying, hey, it's going to be a tight year next year. We're going to have to hold the line on these other expenses. Keep in mind, board, it doesn't mean that the cost for supplies and purchase services aren't going to go up. They are. We're just not going to budget an increase, which means we're going to be buying less of them. So it, it's not that, oh, we're going to somehow magically be able to control the economy and buy the same amount of stuff, we're going to have price increases from our vendors, and, but we're just, we're holding that budget flat. Future budgets, then, are built off of this year's budget, which means that, you know, we, we're, we're pulling back on this, which has a five-year impact on our buying power for supplies, purchase services, and capital. So they're, all, all the future years will be lower as well. All right, in the out years, what you'll see is that I've got all those expenses increasing at CPI. So that would presume, we want the same level of buying power in the out years. So...
I just ask you, since you're there.
Yep.
The, the transportation for next year, is that part of what we're going to be voting on? So it'll be 5.4 this year and 3.5 that year?
Three and a half the year after.
Okay.
We had a two years, what, what we negotiated with them.
And that's filled in there.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Summer projects, what we had in last year's budget was, or committed the whole assumption list, was that we cut back on summer projects budget, and we want to get it back to the 3 million. Now, in your attachments in board docs, I provided for you the memo that we had shared with the facilities committee, and it was one that Dr. Altshuler had talked about at a prior board meeting. It really spoke to the importance of maintaining facilities and where we rank in terms of typical models around how much reinvestment you put in to maintain your facilities. Now, maintenance on, on school buildings can be a little bit different than, than perhaps what many of us are familiar with at home in some ways, and in other ways, it's just like that. So most people that I know don't actually save every year money aside so they can buy a new hot water heater. But at some point, you're going to have a big mess on the floor in your utility room when your hot water heater fails, if you still have a hot water heater at your home. And so when that happens, you, you replace it, right? And same thing with roofs, siding, some, your furnace, your air conditioner, those aren't annual expenses. And what we do here in Barrington is prefer not to bake community money. So we don't collect money in advance, knowing that in 10 years, we're going to have to replace a roof in this building, or we probably have to replace the water softeners at the high school coming up within the next six to 12 months. We haven't been saving for the last 20 years to replace those water softeners at the high school. So what we do when we've got big expenses is what we did just recently, we go out to the community and say, we'd like, we're asking for your approval to borrow money through this referendum so that we can invest back in our facilities. And we're accomplishing a lot of deferred maintenance and doing some improvements on our facilities to get that done. So something like roofs, we're not saving money every year to be able to do that. If we did, we would be taxing more now than we need to, we'd be banking that money, we'd have a, a big fund balance, and then in 20 years, when the roof is ready to go, we'd say, oh, well, now we got the money in the bank. But that would also mean that community members that are paying now aren't ever going to see the benefit of that roof, because 20 years from now, they might have moved, but they've been paying for it. So we sort of flip it around and say, we ask for a referendum and say, hey, we'd like your, your agreement to, to be able to do this. And then for community members who now stay over the next 20 years, they're actually living the benefit and have the benefit of that improvement on the facility. So that's generally the way that we have historically done it here in Barrington. So, okay, so it was just a little, a little bird walk about facility investment. Certainly, if you've got questions about that memo or like some other information around that, and the importance of that, and reinvestment back in our facilities, we're happy to talk about that. But for now, the assumption that I worked into the model was, we're back at $3 million a year. So it was a $400,000 uptick, and as we look out over the next several years. All right, then, what's left is, is the transportation fund, and, and I think we've already talked about that, 5.4 on purchase services for this year, the three and a half is next year. Now, actually, that is that the low end, you know, so what we negotiated in the second year was a three and a half to 5% window. So a floor of three and a half and a cap of 5% on that expense, I'm modeling three and a half. So that's at the, it's the bottom end. So that presumes that CPI will be at or below 3.5%. If CPI comes in above that, then the actual for that contract would be above that to a maximum of 5%. So if we're looking at another 7% CPI next year, okay, I, I don't really want that, but, yeah, so I hope I didn't jinx us, but if we had another 7%, what you'd be considering at your next meeting would only provide for a 5% increase on the transportation cost. So that's the cap on it. But I'm modeling three and a half, so I went a little more conservative. Well, I guess, maybe a little more liberal. I'm assuming it's going to come in low. Bless you. All right, so that is, that's what the assumptions are that I have built in here. And so what I'd like to do now is switch you over to, well, what does that look like? And talk about that. I'm going to talk about one other model that, that I did, that you've got, and then we can talk about, okay, what do you think about the assumptions? And, you know, then we have a little more of an interactive dialogue at that point, if that's cool with you. Okay. All right, so the, the next sheet that you should look at is, it's, one's got this pretty graph on it, and if you look at the one, it should say, just below the black bar, it should say Barrington CUSD 220 base scenario. All right, that's the one we're going to be looking at. Are, are you all with me?
Yes.
Yep, okay, all right. So this graph, you, you've seen before, most of you, I think, have seen many times before, and this is a fund balance graph. And what it shows in blue is the 25 to 40% band. But please, keep in mind, board members, this is a real basic 25 to 40%. It's not calculating fund balance pursuant to our board policy. It's close, but it's not exactly the same. So the percentage is not exactly the same as what I show you each year when I do the calculation using the formula from our board policy. So, but this gets you pretty close, gives you an idea that 25 to 40% band. The red line is the historical and projected ending fund balance for our operating funds. This is all operating funds here. So, so what you can see is where we would project for FY '22, it's right in the middle of the page with an ending fund balance. And then you can see, projected for FY '23, this is really our first year of our forecast, you can see it actually goes down. And the year after that, in FY '24, it goes down again. Now, I'll talk about those numbers in just a moment, but then what happens is it slowly starts to tick back up in those out years. So what's driving the, you know, the big drop, it's primarily salaries. As you saw my assumptions, it's not going to be supplies and purchase services. I assume that those were coming at zero, except for transportation. And, so what we do have in here, it's really a salary-driven thing. So that gives you an idea. We stay, in the model that I have here with these assumptions, we stay within the band of 25 to 40, but we do project a deficit in the next couple of years. So if you flip to the backside of that page, what you can see, if you look at the projected FY 2023 column, and you scroll down, you'll see a negative 2,687,774. That's the projected deficit for next year with these assumptions. All right, so that's a, it's a big deficit, so I'm, I'm not excited about it.
Red flag.
Yeah, it's red. In fact, it's in red. It's all, it's always a problem, right? So the following year, in FY '24, it shows a deficit of 183,150. I'm not actually worried about that. You know, when you get down to a few hundred dollars worth of deficit on a projection, some of you might recall Dr. Harris saying this, I'm sure Dr. Hunt would say the same thing, that, a few hundred dollars, we'll manage that during the budgeting process. That's easy, that's not a problem. Administratively, that kind of number, we can work out and make sure that we deliver to the board a, a budget that will, that will be balanced. When you get to about $3 million, that's a bigger deal to, to try and do. That's, that's not something that we can just quickly, easily manage a little bit administratively. So, and then what you see is that when you get into the out years, where actually, it starts to, to drive a little larger surplus. Now, board members, you might recall me talking at a, a previous board meeting, I clearly remember talking about it when we were over at the auditorium at the high school. And I talked with you a little bit about fund balance percentage and financial stability. So for me, financial stability is maintaining a nice even keel over time, and not having, you know, big bounces and movements around. So for you to be comfortable, for our, our staff to be comfortable, for our community to be comfortable that things, as we look at on a longer-term period, are relatively stable, and we're going to be able to do the kinds of programming that we want to do here in Barrington that define this community. So, and to do that, if we want to maintain a stable fund balance percentage, because our budget goes up each year, the fund balance needs to go up a little bit each year. And what I told you was, yeah, sort of that 750 to million dollar number is about the amount that keeps our fund balance percentage relatively flat. So, so I, you know, ideally, I would love to be able to give you today a projection with these assumptions that actually had exactly the same, like a very stable fund balance percentage. Like this has got a fund balance drop, but if you average the current year projection plus the five years going forward, what we actually have is, on average, a surplus that's right in that 750 to million dollar range, on average. So that's the good news. So at, at the longer-term look, on average, we're, we're pretty good, but in the short term, it's not so hot. So I have something to suggest for you. And this gets you to this next page. So there's only one change on here, which I will describe to you. It's not one that I actually imagined I'd be suggesting to you. I wasn't anticipating that we would be seeing a surplus that had increased in the way that the projection is showing right now. So I didn't anticipate that, that million dollars was a great windfall from the state on the transportation reimbursement, a couple other things that, you know, worked out favorably. What we've done in the last couple of years is, is we've tried to take a look at years where we're driving a larger surplus than we were expecting, how do we benefit the next year? Because really like to try and pocket some of that money and put it against the next year's budget. And the way we did that was by moving some of the surplus into the capital projects fund early. So normally, each year, you would do a, if we issued D sub bonds, about 2.3 million, and then during the year, you transfer 2.3 million when we sell those bonds, we'd take that money and we'd move it into the capital projects fund. What we've done the last couple of years is we've said, well, let's do that one year early. Let's take the surplus out of the current year, move it into the capital projects fund, and then the next year, when we issue the D sub bonds, we'll leave them in the operating funds. Right, so that, it, it's all, it, it's sort of the same money, it's just a timing matter that reduces the current year surplus and, and at the benefit of the next year. So this model, you know, if you look at this, at the graph on here, you know, and you compare them, you're like, okay, well, it looks about the same, it's a little flatter. The FY '22 number is a little lower, it's about 2.3 million dollars lower, and if you, so that, that's absolutely true. But when you flip that page over, what you'll see happens is, well, what happens with the deficit next year? Well, instead of being about 2.7 million, it's about 300,000. And I would tell you, and I think Dr. Hunt would, would support this, is we, we'll manage a $300,000 deficit administratively. We can work that out. But, you know, this involves doing the same thing that we did this last year. Now, we're not going to do that forever. I'm not recommending that we do that forever, but we've had, now, a few years in a row, driven by the pandemic, these unusual surpluses that make it advantageous for us to do that. Honestly, if we had... Honestly, if we had a normal CPI, normal being closer to 2%, I probably would not be sitting here with this model and, and suggesting that as one you should consider. Because next year's expenses would be significantly lower, which would take care of the deficit. And then what we would, you would do is, at the end of this year, as this board has done for many years, you would say, well, what, what surplus do we have? Do we transfer some of that into the capital projects fund to allow for some of these big projects that come up periodically, like returning the stadium or other, you know, other major projects, you know, boiler repair, some things that come up unexpectedly? So that's what I have for you at the moment. I'm going to take a breath, grab something to drink, and then happy to dialogue with you, answer questions. Sarah's here, if you've got questions about the projection for this year. We can talk through any of the assumptions, and we talk about what, if anything, you'd like to see different on the overall model.
Any questions?
Just want to be clear, this, what you presented for fiscal year '23 is based on a tax levy of 1.9%. Well, 1.4%, but, but an estimated tax levy change of 1.9%. So the way, all right, so, and I don't want to get too finance school geeky on you with this. But we have a disconnect between the levy cycle and the budget cycle. So they're offset by six months. So the levy that, that this board just approved in December gets extended, that is, the tax bills go out now during FY '22. So that was the '21 levy, and it gets collected during calendar year 2022. Well, the first half of calendar year 2022 is part of our fiscal year '22, but half of it is part of next fiscal year, FY '23. So in FY '23, from a budget perspective, we actually have to blend those two levy years. But my assumption that I have in here is that the FY '23 levy will be at a 5% plus new construction level. So that would, that's, that's what I've modeled here. So, you know, obviously, if, we can't go higher than that. If we go lower than that, what that does is it decreases the revenue and increase, increases the deficit that we see, and it has a multi-year impact, because each subsequent year is based off of the prior year as a base.
And so this is why you added this, the line item of the tax levy change for the calendar year, right?
Yes. You know, that, that, I don't love that line on here, Sandra, to tell you the truth, because it's hard for me to actually predict exactly what the calendar year change will, will be, because it's actually fiscal year columns. So, so I'm not really showing that. I, I think that was an attempt in the past to do that, and as I mentioned, I, I almost just deleted that row, because it's hard for me to tell you. But what I did put in here is a, a percentage that is consistent with what you've seen from me in the last few years when I do a levy presentation, which is, what do I think the calendar year increase will actually, you know, will, will actually be? And, and actually FY '24, now I'm looking at it, I'm like, oh, well, that's totally wrong, because it can't go up by seven and a half percent. It actually can only go up by 5% at most. So there's a typo on you, on there for you. Yeah, so.
Change though.
You mentioned, though, you said that you put in five. You told us, it says seven, but you put in five.
Yeah, the, the model is reflective of 5%. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's kind of, that's going to be my next question. So given enrollment's gone down, and it's projected to keep going down, 5% levy is going to be hard, I think, for, for taxpayers to swallow. So what, so basically, you're saying if we don't do the, can you project out, say, say 5% is not, not happening? So it's just going to keep, that, you, the, oh my God, I can't talk. You know what I'm trying to say? It's just going to compound upon itself year by year by year?
Right. So, so what, what would happen? So if, if, you know, each 1%, you know, is, is somewhere, you know, we've got about a, a capped levy close to 150 million. So each 1% is about 1.5 million dollars. So when you look at it, if we said, well, we're not going to do 5% plus new construction, we're going to do 4%. What that's going to do is reduce revenue in the year in which that happens, but the following year, you also will not get that 1.5% plus any increase that might have happened on top of that 1.5%. So that over five years, what you're really looking at is an overall fund balance impact of, of between 7.5 and 8 million dollars, by one year doing a 1% reduction. So, so that's sort of how that, you know, that, that math plays out, which is why when you, you know, if you, when you, if you modeled this and say, let's say we did zero instead of 5%, right? What, what you would see on fund balances, instead of, instead of this chart where, where this red line stays relatively flat, what you would see is it dropping off dramatically, targeting zero. I would have to take a look at it to see if we did one year at zero and the rest at, at two and a half, does it hit zero, or does it just approach zero in the five-year planning horizon? But, so you, you know, you've got to look at that and say, well, if we reduce revenue, what do we do on the expense side? All right, so, you know, if we, if we have to look at cutting a million and a half dollars worth of expense, then, you know, one way to think about it is, oh, you know, our planning assumption around adding or reducing licensed staff, our teaching staff, it's about $75,000. So this is, it's an average of where people are within their first five or so years, and that salary and benefits combined. So you could take, you know, the, the million and a half dollars, divide by 75,000, I think that comes out to 20, if, if my mental math is right. And so that would be, I would, we'd need to reduce 20 in the first year to balance that out, or other expenses, obviously, right? If it's not just that.
Yeah, just like you were willing to do in purchase services and supplies and stuff.
Sure.
Other places it can come from.
Sure, exactly. Unfortunately, even, you know, when you, when you take a look at those chunks of 1% reduction, you know, holding those flat works for a while, but at some point, if you said, well, we're just going to hold those flat over five years, and CPI is running at, at 2 and a, 2 and a half percent per year, you know, you erode that purchasing power, and now you've got to make some material changes around, well, what is it that we can get? And what is it that we're trying to do and deliver? So, you know, when I, when I, when I think about the forecast and what we're trying to accomplish, you know, here, you know, I think often about, what's our strategic plan? And what, what is this community looking for? What's this board looking for? And, you know, we have this opportunity right now that's coming up with strategic planning over the, the next six months or so, you know, where I think the board has the opportunity to make some decisions, interact with the community, get feedback from the community and our staff members about what is it that we want? What makes '22 to '20? And what kind of district do we want to be? And, you know, if you told me, we want to be the absolute best at everything, we want to have the best facilities, we want to have the best, you know, support systems, and we want to have the, you know, the most number of staff members to support children with instruction and wraparound services, I will tell you, it's going to cost more. You know, that's, but I would build a model for you that would be based on the input from Dr. Hunt and my colleagues that would say, whatever that, the best is, or however we define that, so what does that mean in terms of supplies, purchase services, capital, staffing, and any other expense, right? So that, we would figure that out, and I would drive the model to be whatever it was that the boards said they wanted to see. And if you said, no, you know what? We don't want all that stuff. In fact, we're okay with, you know, reducing some of the kinds of services, or changing around what we do, that's, that's going to end up being less expensive, I can model that. The finances that you have, board, the budget that we build, should really be based off of, what's the programmatic things that you want to have happen here? And so that, I want that to drive what I'm modeling. Right now, these assumptions on here, yeah, we could change the assumptions up and down, and we can get different results. I can drive all kinds of results for you. But ultimately, the assumptions need to be consistent with your vision for this district. And, you know, and we're right at that cusp of doing that strategic planning. And, you know, that, you know, that may change some, you know, some of what we have here and how that looks, and what kinds of expectations we have over the coming years in terms of how we manage our finances. But my goal, when people ask me, really, what is it, what is it that you do? I like to say, well, what I do is try to ensure that we have the right resources available at the right time to support educating the students in this community. A part of that, of course, includes preserving the investment that the community has made over decades in the school district. So I said some of the facility stuff, because we don't want to let the facilities degrade over time. So, you know, that includes that. But that's part of making sure we got the right resources available at the right time to support the instructional goals and objectives and programming for the students. So, and Katie, that's a sort of a long answer, but I want you at least to know philosophically where your business manager's coming from on this. And, again, I can model a lot of things, but I, what I want to make sure is that what I'm modeling is something that will deliver what the board wants in terms of the programming and help us drive decisions. So there's just part of what we do with five-year forecasting is, hey, if we see we've got a big deficit that's going to grow year after year, the board needs to engage in that decision-making process around, well, what are we doing differently so that we can ensure we've got financial stability over time? And I want to give you that, I want to give you what you need, help you know, hey, we got a flag here, there's something going on, or whatever it is. So I'll make the model look however. And if we want to make a different assumption, and it's got an unfavorable impact on our longer-range projection, that'll be the time I'll tell you, oh, yeah, well, hey, look at that line, it's, it's going out into the toilet. So, you know, we're going to have to really talk now for changes that are going to be two to three years down the road.
And part of the reason I included, you know, my listening report was to give you at least a sense from the groups that I have talked to, what the priorities of the school district or what the community, I guess, sees as the priorities of the school, of the school district. Now, it's going to be much more comprehensive as we move that, through that process and vet it, so I don't want to, I guess, lead you to believe that represents the all, because we've got to, we've got to reach out and get more diversity in that conversation. But that's part of why we wanted to include that information for you to consider as we talk about funding and the things that we support within our school districts.
I thought that was the time, Dr. Hunt, that, you know, a couple of the things people really appreciated with our school district were our teachers and our programs, that we have good programming and lots of opportunities for students to get involved in all different things that they're interested in.
Show me your budget and I'll show you what you care about, right? That's, I'm not sure. I do have a, just, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so for, so if for FY '23, it's the DCEB surplus, the proposal is keeping the DCEB surplus in operating, right? Just for FY '23? And then, instead of allocating it toward the capital projects fund?
Right, it's, it's basically pre-funding the capital projects fund. So because we're driving a bigger surplus this year, right now, we're projecting that, we would do that transfer at the end of this year, rather than wait until we did the issue next year. And the next year, we would do the DCEB issue, and we would retain that in operating to offset the funding shortfall that we see to match up against our expense structure.
Yeah, it's clear you're not, you, you are funding the capital.
We are funding capital projects.
We are funding capital, okay, it's just, it's more of a.
Yes, it's when we funded.
Oh, it's more of a, a tiny issue.
That's correct.
And how we go about it. It's not like we're not going to have enough in capital projects.
That's correct.
And that's why we see that consistent number here.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, how many years have we done this? Well, we've pre-funded the.
Uh, we've, we've, we've done it twice.
Just our second? Just two so far?
We've done twice. If, if the board wanted to go down this path for FY '23, that would be the third year. And again, as I said, if CPI were at a historical level over the last decade, I, I don't, I wouldn't be suggesting that. I think that you would make a decision around what you did with this year's surplus as normal, and then next year would balance itself out, and we just have a normal process in place. You know, we, we certainly have had that benefit over the last couple of years, but it's really been a timing. And it hasn't been all benefit, it's been benefit at the end of one year at the expense of the next, so.
So you said you put in, you baked in the assumptions in the formulas, the, the results of the Caserta report with the lowering enrollment, where, like, can you explain that more?
Yeah, so, so what, what I did is I had, I had Teresa take a look at that, and she worked with Craig to go through, Teresa focused on the elementary and got some support from, from Craig, and looking at the middle school and high school levels. This gets a little more, see, a little more complicated there to try to figure out, when you have a reduction at the high school, what's the actual staffing impact? You know, on a, on a big school with a wide variety of programs and, and stuff going on, but, but the, the basis for that was, hey, tell me, as we look at enrollment, what's the FTE reduction over time for that? And then based on the year. No, so sometimes what happens, you think about cohorts moving through school, it's easy to think about at the elementary level. If you have a, a school that's got 200 first graders, next year, guess about how many second graders they'll have? About 200, right? Yeah.
Is this a trick question?
Yeah, it's a little bit of a trick question. But, but if your, you know, if your kindergarten group is, you know, is 175, you know, you might see 175 first graders coming in, right? So, so that, you know, you sort of, you look at that, that promotion. So what does that mean? Well, if I had 200 first graders this year, and next year, I think I'm only going to have 175, I might be able to go down one teacher at that school, at the first grade level. But I might have had 175 second graders that now are going to become third graders, and I'm going to have 200 first graders that become second graders. So I'm going to need an extra second grade teacher. So I move a teacher from first grade to second grade, right? So the, the net impact at that school might be zero. Or if you, you know, certainly what, what our, you know, my colleagues do, along with our principals and with Dr. Hunt, is each year, as we look at enrollment, and the board gets involved in some of those conversations at the grade level, and we're really looking at, what does this mean? Because when you have a movement within a grade level at a particular school, well, you know, we might have four students that, that come in. Well, what does four students do? You know, it depends. You know, does that put you, where you really got to add another section? Or does that, can you spread them out? Or, you know, what do we do with that? And that's every year, a conversation as we work on staffing for the next year. So in this case, we're looking at, you know, at, at this overall and roll that forward, and I just dropped in based on info from Teresa, here's what the reductions will be each year.
Yeah.
We don't really have a line on here that shows a number, but you can look at the salaries, right? Kind of get an idea.
Right, yeah, that's, I don't have the assumption on there, I just built that, I just built that in on the base model. It's, that, that's something that, regardless of what you want to model, I would recommend that we have the staffing assumptions based on enrollment in every model. Bless you.
Thank you.
So, so that, I mean, that, that's just there. I mean, other assumptions, you said, well, we want to staff up or reduce staff that's unrelated to enrollment, which, you know, is certainly possible to do, those we would list here on the assumption sheet, and I would drop those in as well.
I have another enrollment, and I thought of another one here. So, so, you know, we've staffed up with COVID, so how does our assumption look like next year, the year after, when things should level out again, right? And our ESSER funds are, can go a little bit towards staffing next year? And have we budgeted that? I, I, you've told us, and I don't remember.
Yeah, so the way that, that works is, is if we're going to increase, right, so, well, this year, we've got staff that are covered by ESSER funds.
Right.
Let's pretend.
Right, they're one year.
Yeah, let, yeah, let's, let's pretend they all go away at the. Yeah, let, yeah, let's, let's pretend they all go away at the end of this, the end of the school year.
Okay.
All right. So I have a revenue line built in for ESSER funds, so it's a grant receipts, that matches this, the expense that we have for ESSER funds. So all those staff are paid for, and I have revenue for that. Revenue minus the expense is zero. So it had no impact on, on ending operating results for this year. Now, what we believe is that we've got some ESSER funds that we can use next year still that'd be available, that we can extend out some of the staffing to support our students for one more year and fulfill the purposes of the ESSER grant.
Okay, so that's outside the budget.
What's that?
That's outside of the forecasting.
Yeah, so well, so now what would it, so what would I do next year? Well, next year, I would add in the revenue from the grant that would perfectly offset the expense of those staff.
Okay.
So when I take those staff out, or, it has no impact, because revenue minus expense is zero.
Gotcha.
And every year where we get ESSER funds, they match up perfectly, so, so they don't have, you know, we, if you said, oh, we're getting $10 million next year of new ESSER funding, and we're going to add $10 million of new staff in, no problem, the graph's going to look exactly the same, because, you know, we'll have the, ending fund balances are not going to be impacted, because I'll put the revenue in, I'll put the expense in, it's going to be a wash.
And just to be clear, we can't use the ESSER funds towards our, our budget surplus, we can't just save the money, we need to spend what we're.
That's correct, that's, right, and that's, that's why they've got to match up perfectly, so we can't receive money if we didn't spend it. And all of these grants are on a reimbursement basis, so you have to spend first and get reimbursed later.
But to your point, Leah, to be clear, when those funds run out, when there is not federal funds, those, those positions either have to go away, or we learned that those are really critical, and we need to look at how we could either absorb, reallocate current resources, there is a time when that money goes away, that we're going to have to look at that likely a year from now.
Yep.
So, so in other words, we're anticipating next year, continuing most of these positions for the next school year?
We're, we're in the, we're.
Anticipating.
Yeah, we're having those conversations now.
Okay.
I'm asking, well, I didn't want to, this, so this salary increase for 2023 should in theory be 7% more than 2022, correct? But it's really.
Well, what he's doing is funding produce like FTEs.
There, there are two things that happen.
Gotcha.
That, that affect the increase that you would see there. One is the reduction, you know, because year-on-year percent, when you back out ESSER-funded positions, that, so, I mean, it's going to take the base down, right, so that percent increase is going to look a little wonky, all right? That's one of the things. The other thing is that we have some retiree assumptions built in. So we know we have some staff will be retiring, we have an assumption around what a new higher salary will look like. And so we're able to take the difference between this year's salary and what we anticipate hiring someone at next year, and I've built that into the model as a savings as well.
Okay.
So, you know, so those two things, they're confounding in there, so you can't see a straight percentage.
And this is salary and benefits?
Oh, yeah, the line salary and benefits, right, so you've got a 3% benefit assumption that also brings down that, that average a little bit. Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
I don't know if I have a question, it's much more of a comment. I think, you know, this generally looks reasonable. I guess my question is, so after this evening, what, what gets done with this? Is this now, what's our next step with this?
So, so Steve, let's suppose that the, the board says, yeah, we're good with this set of assumptions and this, this path, including that D sub movement that, that I talked about in that second model. Then what would happen is, we would, I would just send you out just a, a final document that would say, here's our post committee, the whole meeting assumption list, with that final, it'd be the same model that you'd be looking at. And what we would be doing from a budgeting perspective, because we're right at the beginning of the budget cycle right now, and what we would be doing is working on, what's our communication out to our budget owners about what's going to happen next year? And we would be building our budget with, that's consistent with the set of assumptions that we have for FY '23. And I would tell you that, we, you know, it wouldn't be exactly the same that the numbers are here, but we would, and we'd actually deliver to you a budget that would have no worse than a $0 surplus. So, you're right, because right now it's showing 283, I think, is the number, right? It would, I, I told you, we would manage that administratively during the budget process, so that would go away, so we'd be looking at a, at least a flat favorable budget. And that's how we would use that. We would also then have opportunities to have conversations over the next year, that if we see that there's a reason to have material changes in these assumptions, so something new happens, whether that's strategic planning, a change in the economy, something else, that there's an opportunity to come back and say, hey, let's think about how this changes our, you know, the future and what our projection looks like. We also have collective bargaining that will be taking place with our BSEO partners this year, and then our BEA partners next year. So, you know, you know, obviously, as, you know, from, you know, as your, as your financial expert at the district, what I would tell you is that if you make bargains with our association partners that are materially different than what's in this forecast, it may have material impacts on what that forecast looks like, right? So we would also be using this as the basis for doing some of our internal analysis, you know, some district analysis on what do potential bargains do to our financial outlook? And so, so that's some of the ways that we would use this, and, and do use this on an annual ongoing basis. Is that helpful?
It is, and that's kind of what I'm getting at. So, I'm going to use my words then. Effectively, what we're doing is we're developing a target, right?
Yeah.
And this will be allocated based on all the budget owners. How does that, how do they interact with you then, as our, you know, chief business officer?
Yeah.
How, how does, so you give them a target, what's the next step for them, and at what point do they come back to you and say, here's how I could work within the confines you provided, or here's how I cannot work within the confines you provided?
Yeah, so, right, so this, this is a, I'm going to characterize this as a, what's our general budgeting process, when, is we, once we roll forward, right? So, so what we'll do is, we would share this information back out with, with the district leadership team to really comprise primarily all of our budget owners. And, and I believe that, once we've laid this out, I, I'm not going to hold somebody to, hey, the, the supply assumption was zero, your budget needs to show zero on supplies, because that's not the, I don't believe that's the right way to manage this, because someone might say, hey, you know what, I had a purchase service decrease of 20%, because stuff I, I, I don't, it's not appropriate anymore, but I do need some other supplies. So we're going to look at it and say, yeah, you need to manage that supply and purchase service to be zero. And so there's always a little bit of shifting back and forth in primarily those couple buckets.
And you say, buy the line item, I need it to be at this level?
No, I don't, I'm saying I don't. I, I think that's not the right way to do it. What we will say, so for, for example, Teresa in human resources, so she's got a budget that includes supplies and purchase services. So Teresa will know, hey, I've got to be, I'm looking at zero, right? So my supplies, my purchase services, really my capital, she doesn't really have any capital in her budget, but they need to be at zero. And if she comes back to me and says, you know what, they need to be at more than, it's got to be more than zero, because I've got a particular initiative or program or something that is going to go up by more than zero, then what happens, that, so that's sort of the next level. So first thing is, you work on managing that within your functional area, at your school, in your department. If you can't, then we have at the exec council level more conversations, because then, you know, we might be able to say, oh, hey, you know, you've got to be, Teresa's got to be a little bit higher. So Matt says, hey, no problem, I'll be a little bit lower, and, and I will balance that out for you. What Sarah does is works with every one of our budget owners, and we'll meet with them as they're building their budget. We review their budget requests and have conversations about where we are, what might need to flex, and then we roll that up and look, well, where are we? Are we consistent with the assumptions that we laid out for, for this next year? And how does that play out? Right, now, staffing, you know, is, is one of those things that, you know, I'm not assuming that we're going to have any staffing changes outside of ones driven by enrollment. So.
I don't know if you ever thought I had some of you, FTEs in here for teachers, but not for administrators nor full-time staff.
I, I'm not assuming any change on, on, on any of the staff, so it's, it's outside of the, the changes driven by enrollment on our.
So like retirements and those types of things, don't even take into account, we just assume replacement, backfill.
Correct, yeah. And retirees, of course, that, you know, the savings, which, you know, folds back, folds back into the budget. But, you know, what happens when we're building the budget, you know, we might get into late spring, early summer, and as the board's having conversations with, with the administrative team about what is enrollment looking like, we may find that there's a, a different, something different happens than what was exactly modeled out here. In which case, then we have to respond to that. So if we have a big pop in enrollment somewhere, well, we, we have to, we have to address that. You know, so I think the board knows that going the other direction, there's a timing issue that, you know, we contractually, or legis, statutorily have to notify staff by a certain date if they're not coming back the following year, our teaching staff. So, you know, if we, and that's where the board goes through an annual RIF process, and usually we, what happens, what you hear from Teresa is, we're, we're ripping a wide variety of staff, but we anticipate we're going to be bringing most of them back. But if something happens, you've got a big drop, well, then you might not bring them all back, right? So that, so that's how we usually try to accommodate that, to make sure that we're balancing our staffing with the actual enrollment, but that is evolutionary over the, over the spring and into the summer, along with our budget development.
Sure, no, that helps. And, you know, I appreciate the example of, you know, using Teresa and Matt as, in saying, like, let's just look at purchase services, there's an offset there. Is it, is it, is it an option if they say, well, you know, I'm going to increase my purchase services, for example, but I'm going to reduce my supply, so on a net basis, my surplus for my department.
Absolutely.
Also is fine.
Yes.
So, okay, so we're not going to hold them to a standard and say.
No, because I, I really want everyone here that has a budget or owning, to be able to meet the educational needs that we've got in front of us. And I don't want to be the one who sits in the business office and dictates that, hey, at, at the high school, no, I don't care what you got, you, you have to spend no more than this amount on supplies, because that's the right thing for our students. So I'm not in a position to be able to do that. Steve can say, Dave, I need to spend a little more on supplies, but I figured out a way to do that within my, within my budget. Because if we go with this number, we're going to be in the hunt for, you know, $300,000. And so, you know, that's where we're going to be starting, you know, our conversations as, well, we're in the hunt for that right now, and, and what do we do? And then we're going to have this evolutionary process of how do we meet our needs with the available funds that we have.
Sure. So you had mentioned that Sarah now sits with each of the budget owners, right, over the course of, well, I assume, as soon as this is complete, until when?
I request that the budgets are turned in in March, so I'll schedule meetings with anybody that either needs help, wants it, anybody that I can meet with over the next few months. And then in March, if there's any outlying issues, we'll meet about it then, but I, I sort of start pulling everything together in March, so that in the spring, we're prepared to have more conversations about where are we falling.
Okay, and then, so what, so then, once you develop, decide where you're falling, do you then regroup with folks who are either above or below the target, and then, I guess, help me understand how that all works?
The information that I provide to each budget owner has the amount that they are essentially allowed to budget, and so my cover page on each one, I can see everybody budgets essentially exactly what they've been allocated. If somebody does have any, we talked about Teresa, they'll come to me, generally, they're not going to complete their budget and just let me find that, they're going to reach out to me if there's any issues.
Yeah, so if there, if there are, you know, somebody's over, yeah, we're having that conversation before they're actually sort of submitting that, because we, we need to work through that to figure out, how, how do we make that work? And, you know, if somebody's under, great, you know, they're probably not.
Like it's built in.
That, that comes in, it just rolls in.
Yeah.
Right, so.
And maybe back up, we've already had conversations before, the numbers you see, at a high level, are there big expenses out there, programs, curriculum, that we need to know about before they've even sat down here? That, because you want to know those red flags before coming and having this conversation.
You know, the, you know, our school district has been around for many, many decades, and, and I anticipate, will, will be, will be here for many, many decades to come. And so sometimes it's good to take the, you know, the little longer view, and one of the things that, that Sarah and I are working on, that I think, what we're going to really try to, over the next couple of years, further instill within the district, is some of that longer-term view on things. And Melissa and I just recently had a conversation about curriculum updates, right? So, you know, when you're around for 50 years, you, you update your curriculum periodically, and we generally should have a curriculum replacement, and I know Melissa's got something that, that she's working with, like, when do we replace that, right? It shouldn't be a surprise. It's just like what I've been working with Nicole on for our facilities. It shouldn't be a surprise that we need a roof done in 20 years. When we installed it in, you know, 2022, and it was a 20-year roof, probably in 2042, we should plan that we're going to have a roof, right? When do we need to replace band uniforms, wrestling uniforms, cheerleader uniforms, like, all this kind of stuff? We should be able to put that on a cycle and sort of have that planned out. You know, Dr. Fuller does this with our technology, as he's talked with you about technology replacement, right? It's on a cycle, so we know, this is about how often this stuff is going to come up, here's how we're going to fund it, and the goal is to try and have a pretty even keel kind of a budget, because it's very difficult to deal with big spikes. So, you know, if, if Melissa comes to me and says, you know, hey, Dave, we need $3 million next year to do a curriculum update. I'll say, well, what are we getting rid of to make the $3 million work? Oh, no, no, we need to do all of our stuff. I would look at her, Dr. Byrne, it's not going to happen, right? I mean, I can't magically produce an extra $3 million for you next year. So what's better is we say, well, we've got a, a teaching and learning budget that Dr. Byrne's managing, and we know, here's how we're financing this stuff, funding it over the longer term. And so if a curriculum lasts seven years, or however long it lasts, don't quote me on that, Dr. Byrne, help me out.
Seven years.
Help?
Typically, that is seven years.
Oh, look at that.
You're right.
Look at that, lucky seven, all right. So if it lasts seven years, then, you know, okay, well, we did the science curriculum, and probably seven years out, that's coming again. And so we, she can just plan that, so there aren't big spikes, but she knows what she's got to do as we go over time. So, so I think that's something that I, you know, it's something I believe is important within the life of a school district, and it's good to have a lot of that stuff laid out. So as a leadership team, now, Dr. Hunt and the exec council team can look at it and say, well, we know what the big hitters are that are, that are coming up here, and we've got a plan to be able to fund that without big swings in our budget that are difficult to accommodate. So, and I think, you know, Sarah and I have talked about, how do we, how do we get more of that in place here, where we're all thinking about it and we're talking about it? So what Dr. Byrne and I have talked about on her curriculum replacement schedule, what Nicole and I have talked about in building out, you know, more moving pieces on the facility side, but the same type of stuff, so we can take a long look. And there isn't a reason that we can't look out 10 to 15 years and say, well, we sort of know what these big things are that we're going to do. You know, you, you don't replace, you know, athletic uniforms every year, and hopefully you stagger them, and that's what we work on, and I know that's what our athletic department does, and they work on staggering them, so it's about the same kind of expense each year, and you can make that nice and steady. But you're, you're meeting the educational needs, and you're responsive to folks. But, you know, again, I don't want to tell people, here's what you got to do or not do. We'll look at the request, and then we'll have that conversation, say, how, how can we make that fit within our budgeting assumption, you know, based on what the board has established, and we work with Dr. Hunt to try to figure that out and make it all work.
Sure, no, that's extremely helpful. So I guess, let me ask you this, when you provide that, when you send this out, and they had this list of all the owners, is that something that you can share with the Board of Education, so that we have an understanding of who the owners are, and, you know, so I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at here is, I'm getting that you have meetings, Sarah. I assume that each of the budget owners therefore has individual meetings within their own groups as well, because they have folks that they probably delegate responsibilities to. Is, are those things that the Board of Education can participate in, even if it's just in a, in a, you know, observatory standpoint, just to see how this is being done? Because I guess what I'm getting at is, this is only as good to me as what the actual output is. You know, assumptions are fine, but ultimately, it's, what do, what specifics are we putting in here in terms of, you know, how we, how we actually come up with our budget? Does that, am I making sense? Does that, am I making sense?
Typically, I, I would tell you from my experience, and I'll defer to Dr. Hunt, but from my experience, board members are, are not normally involved in detailed budget discussions around what's our, we've got $500 in this particular account number and, you know, what that is. And honestly, on a, a budget the size of what we have, I could tell you Sarah's probably not getting into the weeds on, well, what exactly is this $500 that, that you have in this one particular account? Although she may, in many cases, actually do have that, that conversation, but...
We trust administrators that own the budget to budget accordingly within the parameters that are set for. You know, information sharing to the board is one thing, sitting in the meetings, that, that's administrative duty.
I guess here's the thing, right? I guess from, from my perspective, you know, I'm, I'm just kind of regurgitating the data that we, we were given as it relates to the CUSARDA document, the, you know, and thank you again, Dr. Bynne, for your team putting together the levy information and the CPI growth and all that. What I'm finding is that, so the levy, call it the extended levy, was growing about 2% a year annually from 2009 to 2022. Our enrollment declined about 1% on an annual basis between 2009 and 2022. And just to put some numbers behind this, we're talking about 112 million, up to about 144, 145 million from 2009 to 2022. But our enrollment went from 9,200 to 8,100 over that same period of time. And, you know, when you talk about the cost per student, the cost per student 2009 was approximately 12,175. 2022 is about 17,765. And we're talking about a 3% increase on that cost as well. So I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is, you know, this will, this set of assumptions will generate a number that's going to fall in line with what our levies done. And in and of itself, it's not, you know, like I said, it's reasonable if we just take what happened prior years and just move it forward. I guess, you know, I'm going to go back to what I've been saying for, you know, the last couple of meetings when levy's been brought up, the budget's been brought up. It's, what can we do, you know, to think, just even think differently? And I guess that's what I'm getting at. And I get that we don't want to put more stress on the administrators, because I don't either.
You sound like you do, so just, I've got to be careful.
Well, I don't want to put additional work on anybody.
The board is supposed to be up on the balcony, if you remember what we kind of learned at the beginning. And we have to let the people on the dance floor do the dancing. So, you know, we're, we're kind of observing, we're supervising, but I don't think we want to get involved in the little minutia. I think we have to trust the administrators to do their job.
Somebody think it's fair to ask a question of what we keep increasing our budget year after year as we keep decreasing our enrollment year after year?
And that's exactly...
Fair to understand where those numbers are coming from.
I mean...
That's fair, and, you know, it costs more each year to educate. Your, your, you know, everything goes up, the cost of milk, I mean, you know, it, it costs more every year to do that. So just to maintain, it's going to, it's going to cost more. And, you know, again, we're looking at the quality of education. We just have to be careful, you know, people move to Barrington for the quality of the education. So let's be careful that we're not going to be cutting back on quality just to, you know, make a budget or something.
And I can't speak for 2009 till now, you know, what programs were added, what decisions were made along the way. Obviously, costs rise as we go and manage that. And for me to, you know, spend the time going back there, I'm not sure is a worthwhile endeavor.
Agreed. Yeah, I don't think we should, and I'm not, that's not what I'm, not what I'm suggesting. I mean...
I think what you heard tonight is, we are using the data that's been provided to us from CUSARDA to drive at least staffing models. And the model isn't the end-all, be-all that, okay, we're done now. I think you'll, you'll see throughout the spring, we'll bring enrollment to you. Here's, here's where class sizes are, here's what we're worried about, here's where we think we have opportunities. Maybe it didn't, you know, Dave mentioned the scenario where something spikes and enrollment grows, and we have to add. But there may be scenarios where that's not the case, and we actually have to, to take things away. I, I, I don't know that going backward helps with moving this forward.
Yeah, agreed. I don't think we need to go backwards at all. I guess what I'm getting at is, rather than try to ask Dr. Bynne and all the other budget owners to come back with details for us, because, I mean, to me, that's, there's certainly a level of trust here. That's not the question. It's a, it's a matter of, are we seeing something, can we see something that maybe, you know, isn't being considered? A different perspective. And, you know, that's why I say, you know, is this something that we can sit in on as a board? Or at least have the option to do so, rather than create a new meeting for us? Is this something that we can participate in individually, even if it's just, like I said, in, as an observer, to just understand what's being discussed? And can we, you know, therefore have a more intimate understanding of what the budget looks like? Because I, I will say this, when I joined the Board of Education, you know, a couple of months ago, and got the first budget that we had approved, you know, it took a lot of work for me to go through all the board, boardback meetings, to just get an understanding of how things build up month over month over month over month so that I can get a better appreciation. And even then, to be quite honest, it was, well, the budget's already done, so I'm kind of here just to prove what my, my predecessors already did. Because we're starting now in earnest in January, I mean, to me, it's, and it's not about me. I would say that this would be something that we should, I don't know, all be open to if we want to partake in it. You know, starting with Sandra at the very top, all the way down to, you know, me. You know, if it's something that, that we participate in, just to at least, like I said, get an understanding of how the sausage is made, I think that would be helpful, at least for me too, to just say, okay, I get how the budget was done, and let's move forward. And yeah, this is about as good as we can do.
I, I guess my, you know, just to be frank and direct...
Please.
I, I think, in my experience, that's, that's tremendous overreach from a board member in terms of the level of involvement. And putting the trust in the people in those areas to budget accordingly based on needs, and our executive council being responsible for making sure that those budgets align with the priorities of the district is, is what you hire us to do. And if, if you're, you know, if you feel like expenses or expenditures are not appropriate, then I think that's a broader conversation.
Well, I guess that's the problem. I don't know, because there's, there's only so much piecing together I can do based on historical financials and looking at budgets and trying to, you know, kind of tie them together. It would be really nice to hear in a conversation, and I'm, you know, I don't want to pick on any particular superintendent, so I'll just say, you know, Superintendent A., Assistant Superintendent A. just was talking to his or her team and just said, you know, I see that this line item has been used in prior years, let's eliminate it. I think that would give me, give me some comfort in saying, okay, I see this thing done. Rather than, well, this was something that we had budgeted, and, you know, we've used in the past, perhaps we should carry it forward. And I mean, obviously, actuals will take you back to where you are, but I guess, let me put it this way. I'm a proponent of zero-based budgeting, where you don't start the prior year, you start with, what do I need? And let's build up from there versus, you know, just taking the prior year and adding 2% to it, or 2.5% to it. I mean, to me, that's, I don't know, is that the best way of doing it for a forecast? It's not, it doesn't really matter. But when we actually get to the budget and start spending based on what we're allotted, that to me is, I don't know, to me, that's asking for trouble, for lack of a better word.
What, what we do, and I'm assuming that you've probably been involved in budgeting processes in your, in your own work. And, and I did that in, in the private sector with budgets that were significant, over 10 times the size of what we have here in Barrington. So, you know, I, I've done that in the private sector, I've done it in the public sector. And honestly, the budgeting process is pretty similar, and certainly the way I approach it is, is very similar. Zero-based budgeting from a broad perspective is, is, it, it sounds great, but it doesn't make a lot of sense because I, I don't want to go back to each principal or, or to HR and say, justify why we have a teacher in this classroom. And, and go back to our, our B&amp;G team and say, justify why our, our electric bill is what our electric bill is going to be, right? So there are some things that it, it probably doesn't make sense for zero-based budgeting. But there are other things it does. And philosophically, I think you and I are probably very similar on this in that I, I don't, nor does Sarah, simply say, we're going to take every account number that we have and increase it by whatever percent that we've got on our budgeting assumption. We expect all of our budget owners to go through their budgets and take a look at it. And I think if you ask my colleagues here, they will tell you that, that they've heard me say, well, you need to be thinking ahead about what you're intending to spend money on. And there isn't a secret pot of money here. So if you come partway through the year and you ask me, well, how do we, I want to do blah, 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 how do we pay for it? I'm going to say, well, did you budget it? And probably most of them have heard me ask that question, well, did you budget for it? Because they should be, and we expect, they will be going through their budget. And we do see, in fact, that we have people who take money out of this account and they move it to that account because they're thinking about, oh, what am I projecting that's going to come forward? And it's either, sometimes it's moving, as I described earlier, out of purchase services into supplies or vice versa. Sometimes it's among those accounts. But it's not a presumption of, you, just because you had it, you always get it, and you can spend it on whatever you want. We expect all of our administrators to only be approving things that actually make sense to achieve our, our educational goals here in the district. So it's not free money, and you get to do whatever you want with it. We do look at, at those kinds of expenditures. So I think, you know, philosophically, we're probably fairly similar on, on what we're doing. You know, we're not participating in budget conversations, and it's just, oh, yeah, I just, I just increased everything. So, no, we're going to go back and look at it. Let's talk about what are you really trying to do? What are you spending your money on? You know, and even some of the questions that we periodically get more often will come from, from principals is, you know what, I want to, I need X for my school. I don't have enough money. Can I save money from this year's budget into next year's budget? Or, you know, how, how do I do that? You know, because there's not just a, hey, I, I got it, and I'm going to spend it willy-nilly. It's just real thought processes. And then we have to work through, how do you bridge budget years? Because that's actually not really a thing that you can do. But, you know, we have all of those conversations. Administratively, that is what, what we do. So I don't think you would find the process any different than what you have done in the private sector.
Sure, no, I, I, no doubt. I guess I'm, maybe I'm not communicating this well. Let me try and say this differently. What can... Well, let me ask you this. What package do we see before, in March then, once you get everything back from your...
Nothing. We're still building the budget in March. So, so what you'll see is actually, when we get, typically when we get toward the end of the fiscal year, usually in finance, in the Finance Committee, we have some conversations about, here's how the budget is starting to shape up. So we'll have some preliminary information that we'll sort of lay out. That would be consistent, I think it's pretty consistent with what our final budget package looks like.
Yeah.
And, and, and from there, we, you know, we continue then with the full board about, okay, now we're, we're finalized some of these numbers, we've got, you know, we, you know, because we're, in addition to whatever our budget owners have, I will tell you that Sarah has an incredible number of accounts that she has to budget that nobody seems to, I don't want to say nobody owns, but all the revenue accounts that, you know, she's got to plow through. There's a lot of other things that, you know, insurance lines and a variety of other things that don't play into somebody's, I'm deciding how many dollars to put in there. So we're building all of that. It's, it's a pretty hefty process. So, you know, typically, as I think you saw this last year, when we get toward the end of the fiscal year, we're giving you a preview in preparation for a tentative budget that goes up in front of the board. And certainly, if we've got any material variances, you know, that we're anticipating because something else has come up, that would be some other conversations, either with finance or with the full board.
So when you're given, at whatever stage that is, right, before you go to the Finance Committee, is, are the line ends you're given the same as the line ends that were presented to the Finance Committee as it relates to what the budget package looked like? So in other words, you know, you have one line for salaries, basically. And you might break it down by each of the various, you know, companies, or I forget what the terminology is, but you have a breakdown between educational, O&amp;M, transportation, et cetera. But is that pretty much what you guys get then? Or is there a deeper, is there a more detailed package that each of the budget owners has on their own that they're able to maybe share with us as a board?
Salaries are different because actually we pull information out of our financial package based on actual employees as well as openings that exist. So that, that one's a little bit, we don't, you know, I don't go to a principal and say, hey, give me your salary and benefits number. We, we know what, what staffing there is at that school. So we pull that out of our system based off of actual salaries. And so, but when we start talking about supplies, for example, what, you know, we have a variety of accounts that, that someone might budget with a variety of different functions. And so, you know, that, Sarah grabs all of that information because ultimately, when we load the budget into our financial system, we're loading it in by account number. So it's, it's account number driven. So that, that's the level of detail that we're doing.
So is that detail, that's something that you can share with us before the, before Finance Committee then? Or at least with the Finance Committee, so Lee and myself? Can we see then the, by account, breakdown of what's feeding the budget so that we can at least come back with questions?
I think that the, the schedule that we have historically provided is probably a lot more meaningful because if I give you an account number and said there's $500 in there, I don't know how that, I, I don't know what you, I really don't know what you do with that. But, but when you, but one of the documents that we provide actually has descriptions of, it's a roll-up of fund, you know, by fund, of function and object that actually is a lot more meaningful. So that, and, and so the board gets that every year.
Yeah, well, I guess... Yeah, I guess I don't know what that file looks like, but I would just, I would hope that there would be some, there would be a description of the account. So I'm just making this up, but account, you know, XYZ would be, I don't know, widgets. Account ABC would be, I don't know, pinball machines, I don't know.
Yeah, you, you, you won't, you won't see that. And in fact, our, you know, the, the budget is, is, you know, you look at the account structure. I mean, there's not a unique account number for every different kind of item. You know, we don't have a, a different budget line for pencils than we do for erasers, right? So that's going to be a supply, and you're going to see a supply number.
It's like thousands of things, right? It's like an immense amount of accounts.
Yes, how, about how many accounts do we have, Sarah?
About 6,000 expense accounts and another couple thousand revenue accounts. So I'm not making typical comments, like, the board does see a lot of the, the information that goes into this too, right? So we are provided the elementary staffing material every year. We're provided every year at the beginning of the year, not just elementary, but all levels and what are our class sizes, right? And so that gives you a good idea of what our staffing levels are, right? Which drives a very large percent of the budget, right?
Yep.
I won't say a number because I won't say exactly right.
Yep.
We get information, like, here is the curriculum cycle. I think we've already, I can't remember the last time we got it. But we get, we get the curriculum cycle, so we know what that spend is, right? We get updates on several of our unique programs every year so we can see how they're doing and, and talk about how the staff has, has made changes and to, and make them different. We have had even just recently, you, there was a question earlier about administrative staff, right? And why didn't the administrative staff go down, you know, in accordance with enrollment? I think was sort of implied. Well, I'll just use the example, Dr. Harris retired. Last year, we have to have a superintendent. Doesn't matter if we have 100 students or if we have 9,000. We still have to have that position. So it doesn't always fluctuate with, with the enrollment. So there's some things that are kind of, I don't want to use the word fixed, but they're more fixed than others. So we see that enrollment data, we see that in how we are staffing the teachers year to year. And we, so we can understand that and give input to it. We see the curriculum so we can say, hey, I don't know, it looks like maybe Dr. Byrne is spending too much in curriculum in this, at this time. And then we talk about that, and we have that discussion in our board meetings. My experience has been, when we have bumps like that, we come back and we talk about it. When we implemented our one-to-one initiative, we had, oh my gosh, multiple meetings of conversations dedicated to how we were going to be able to implement that per, because it was one of our strategic goals, right? So we constantly have conversations that are, impact the budget, right? But we don't get in and dive in into a, to use Barry your analogy, get on the dance floor. We're up in the balcony making sure that everything that is, is happening is meeting our goals and our plans that are set by the board.
I should also add, every month, you get financials in your board packet. You can go through those and look at where the money's going. You, you can spend the time, hundreds of pages, but, you know, you certainly, if you have the time for it, you can look and see. And I, I have to say, a couple of times I have called Dave and said, hey, I noticed there's a $50,000 check here. You know, tell me what that's for, you know, so you, you can do that and watch. But I've learned that, you know...
You know, so you can do that and watch, but I've learned that, you know, we just have to back off. We can't nickel and dime them. We have to let them do their job.
Another thing, and please correct me if I misunderstood. When we talked about, you know, the sheet and what the numbers were, Dr. Vine, you talked about, if we see a number that's around 300,000 in deficit or surplus, it's something we can probably live with and manage within the exec council and your conversations. Once we start going beyond that, we're gonna have to start talking about program. What do we need to do to meet that budget? We're gonna talk about programming or we're talking about class sizes? Those would be the first two things that get talked about. So if we're, if we want to do an analysis, if this board wants to entertain an analysis of taking a closer look at those things, then we would ask the administration, say, okay, what if we were to cut 1 million? Then we know we're gonna be impacting programming or class sizes because it's greater than the 300 that was mentioned.
That's, that's correct, right. And I think something that goes to the, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish here? And I think I mentioned that last month to the board. You tell us, normally you tell us what you want. You want to see a 10% reduction in the overall budget. Dr. Hunt will take that and he'll work with the exec council team and we'll come back with proposals to how, how do we make that work? And how do we accomplish that? But, Sarah, you're right, that, you know, and I think it ties a little bit with what Steve is talking about, and how do we think about things differently? Well, if, normally differently is, we've got larger class sizes, we've eliminated some of the special programs that we have here that I know prior boards had approved, which probably was part of the cost increase and, you know, that Steve talked about over time. So that's doing some things, thinking about things differently. As best I understand it, because there's, you know, from my perspective, you know, if I have a school that's got 20 teachers in it and we need 20 teachers, I'm not sure how to think differently to have them be less expensive. I mean, so I, you know, I'm not sure how to approach that. So usually differently is, for me, is, the best I'm understanding it from what you're saying, I mean, because it's just, you know, think about it differently, well, we could have fewer teachers, which would change class size or eliminate some programming or wraparound services or other things. But normally, when you're looking at, how do I reduce the cost structure, it is, you know, you can nibble around the edges of, you know, a little bit, which, you know, tends to, you know, which we do on a normal basis as part of our budgeting process and examining things. But for bigger changes, you're really looking at, what's the programming that's going to be affected with that? And we're happy to give options, I defer to Dr. Hunt, but that-
From a non-financial person, and I'm gonna tell you, the biggest question I get from people regarding our budget, who are usually non-financial, how can you keep justifying losing students and increasing the budget? I think even having this conversation is helpful for anyone to watch it. I mean, I gotta be honest with you, asking these questions and talking about it, because if I'm a business owner and I lose 500 clients, but I go and increase my budget, like, that doesn't really make sense to the average person. You can't just say the cost of milk's increased, like, no. Like, so, I gotta be, I, to see, talking through some of this is explaining to people because I get asked this question a ton. Like, you guys keep increasing our taxes and we know enrollment's going down. So I think this is a good discussion to have, and even just at this high level, like, class sizes, teachers, programming, like, so I know maybe it's frustrating to try to get into the nitty-gritty, but people are asking these questions. So, and, you know, so-
Let me just give an example. So elementary class size. So Barry and I both got involved with Enrollment Officer Committee, how long ago was that? 12, 14 years ago? When, when that was the first time, I think we called it the Dr. Gilmore Chart on elementary class sizes. And that chart, when we started, if you remember, you'll have the blips of red now to show that we're over guidelines, right? That thing was red across every, every school, across every grade level. And over time, because we've had the conversations with the community and the community said, we don't want to have large class sizes at elementary, we want to reduce. So over time, if we, if we brought you one of the first one of those charts, and maybe we should do that, take a look at what that thing looked like. And over time, we have definitely been spending more in the elementary to reduce the class sizes.
Valid, like, totally, yeah. Like, that stuff's great. I mean, so, I, from my perspective, I gotta be honest, that's the number, that's the kind of stuff that I think it's good to talk about.
And Katie, even, so a 200-student reduction, you know, over five years. If, if we think about it, even at the elementary level, and I'm gonna look back here, you know, how many, how many classrooms do we have at the elementary level?
Classrooms?
How many classrooms?
I don't have that in mind.
All right, so, you know, maybe we've got, maybe we've got three or four classes per grade level, you know, times, how many schools?
I get it, that's not gonna, you can't reduce it, yeah.
And what you might say is, well, 200-student change might be one student per classroom.
Yeah.
If it's all spread evenly. So how many staff members do we reduce if one student goes away in each of our classrooms? Probably not, right? And, so, but in some cases, we know we can, and that's part of what we folded in on this in modeling that I did for you, is, we are reducing some staff members. Now, the other thing that's happening is that staff members each year have an increase in salary, and we also have a benefits cost increase. And so, and so if we've got one staff member that goes away because we, you know, we dropped a classroom from one year to the next, the salary increase is likely to outweigh the savings related to that one staff member. So, you know, over time, you know, when you've got, you know, slow, you know, slow changes, slow increases or slow decreases in staffing, you don't often see that affecting the overall projection in the long run. You know, there are some districts that have had rapid growth over time and they're building new schools and they're like, there's significant cost structure changes. And there are others that go the other way. When they've got enough of reduction, where you start to look at it and say, can we close a school? And, you know, do we have enough room across the rest of the district? You know, we will change some boundaries and we'll reallocate all those students. And now you're gonna see a material change in your cost structure because you've mothballed a school, so you don't have the operating costs associated with that. You've dropped administrative staff, you've dropped instructional staff, and you've dropped support staff. But that, you know, that's more often when, you know, you've got this either gradual decline over many years, or a more rapid decline for some other reason where you say, yeah, we can actually close one of our instructional centers. That's going to have a big impact on it. But, you know, those other changes, they're harder to see.
Yeah, and numbers work really well at the elementary to have the conversations. When you get to the secondary level, it gets a lot more challenging, right? Do we, do we have, I don't know, let's say Steve's 200 less in the high school next year, or are we gonna cut fine arts? Are we gonna cut AP, you know, bio? Or you start to look at those programs and offerings and, yeah, you may offer and make decisions to offer, you know, small classes or go to an every-other-year rotation, but it doesn't net you FTEs, which is where the savings is.
I'm totally with you. I can certainly appreciate everything that's being said. I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I really don't want to put programmatic changes on the table right now because that's not what I'm getting at. I guess what I'm getting at is, when I think about, when I think about our district and I look at the expense cost increasing, the enrollment going down, just like Katie said, you know, I guess, and I have no doubt, you know, I've had the privilege of meeting and talking to everybody, your exec council, really, and getting an understanding of what they do, and I have the utmost confidence in everyone here. What I'm getting at is, I find it hard to believe that we can't sit down and look at this and say, there's something different that I can do. Short of cutting a program, short of firing people, because that's not the goal here. It's to purely look at what we're doing and figuring out, you know, instead of having, and I don't know, I'm kinda making this up, but instead of having, I don't know, a teacher and an aide, maybe we want to add an aide here or have an aide that splits time? I don't know, but-
I think what you want is you want to get this, you know, the sheet to be at the 300,000 level so that you're not cutting programs, right?
I'm sorry, say it again? What do you mean the 200,000 level?
I think you know where I'm headed, right? Maybe you can say five. So you want to, you want to do, I think, what you guys just did, which is make sure that your surplus, your deficit is in that 100 to 300,000 dollar range.
Manageable level, yeah.
That's a manageable level, manage the budget without having to impact programs. Because we know, once you get a, I'm gonna even, I'll even take a stretch, you guys can yell at me. You don't want it to be above 500,000 unless you're willing to cut a program.
I think, though, that Steve may be wanting it to go the other, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that from prior conversations in the Finance Committee and other comments that Steve's made, I think that he would like to see the cost structure go down more than what results in a balanced budget. So, again, I want to put words in your mouth, but, but from, you know, conversations about, you know, reductions in the levy that you've talked about, reductions in the budget, you know, again, for me, it's challenging to know what, you know, doing something differently is. And I can speak for my colleagues here, they're all extremely talented, and do look at, how do we deliver all of our programming in the most cost-effective way? And your example, you know, about, you know, use of teaching assistance versus staff members, we do that already. And actually, I think Beth has made some, she's made a variety of changes in the way we deliver some of our programming to make it more cost-effective. So, you know, I think we are doing those kinds of things. So, you know, for me, as I, as I listen to some of the things you're saying, I'm not sure what doing things differently means. So, you know, I don't know, you know, what to do relative to that.
Yeah, but here's, here's a great example. You know, you gave us two scenarios to look at, a base and a DCEB pre-funding. That's a great example of how do you, you know, change a protocol to kind of meet a demand that you have, right? And I'm not saying that there's other levers like that you can pull. And again, I have the utmost confidence in Dr. Hunt all the way through the administration. What I'm getting at is, you know, can we, you know, just, all things being equal, can we just think about things, maybe outside the box? You know, sometimes we have, you know, with the certain staff members, maybe we can put them at a part-time level. I don't know. And this way, we don't have to worry about benefits. Is that something we can do? Is that something we would entertain? I don't know. Are there certain positions that we can outsource? So instead of, again, having an employee with a contractor?
Don't go there.
You know what, that's more fun.
I don't know. That's one, but I'm just throwing out ideas because I'm thinking about things I've, you know, I've done in my private life or my, my professional life. I don't know what to do, to be quite honest with you. And that's why I'm suggesting, and if you're saying it's overreach, that's fair enough. But I'm, I was not comfortable with budget when we approved it. Because, again, all I see is annual increases in cost, but annual declines in enrollment. And I'm with Katie. I hear some of the same statements and questions, and I don't, I can say that I've done it because, yeah, I do, I actually do exactly what Dr. Olson just said. I will sit there for four, five, six hours when you have those documents, and I will look through it and I'll say, okay, this, you know, I might not call you, but I will say to myself, gosh, this is a big number, this is a big number. But, you know, all things being equal, we're, you know, below budget. But what does a budget mean to me? Are we just working our way to meeting the budget? I mean, our goal, I think, to me, should be, so we established this budget, so we're going through all these assumptions, okay, we developed a budget, we developed the forecast, great. But what are we doing to try and, try and develop, or try and come up with a surplus? And not just breaking even, a big one. And what can we do to, I don't know, hopefully send some money back to our taxpayers? Because I have no problem, now that I understand these all better, and that's mostly thanks to you, Dr. Vine, understanding the levy, understanding all this, that's great. Let's, let's put the levy at what it should be. And this way, if we have, and this way, we have a cushion. But what can we do to, you know, instead of having a $200,000 surplus, let's have a $2 million surplus, and now we can send some money back to our taxpayers? I mean, what can we do? That's what I'm getting at.
My understanding is that districts like Naperville that were able to return some money to their taxpayers had a much higher fund balance than we did. Like, right, we keep ours between 31 and 50%. Is this right? Like, they had, whereas we might have 50 million, they might have had like 150 million. So I think that their overall mindset with regard to fund balance is different and that was, that allowed them to do something like that. But like Dave was saying, that we're not sitting on a ton of money, right? Like, we, I mean, do you want to keep going with this?
Yeah, that's correct.
I think that's my understanding, right? And that's a, but I mean, yeah, it sounds like Steve, you're saying that one of your goals is to, that you don't have a dollar amount in mind in terms of cost savings, but you want to get somewhere so that, oh, we can say, hey, we can refund some fees or whatever to taxpayers. My understanding is that our whole philosophy around fund balance is different, which is why we weren't able to return money, whereas maybe another district was able to. Do you any-
Well, I mean, the fund balance is one thing, right? Because obviously, we want to stay within the 25 to 40% range that we've, ourselves as a board, or our predecessors really, have established as the range we want to be in, given, you know, the way the state looks at our fund balances. Totally get that. But I mean, it could be one-time items, too. I mean, you're pointing out Naperville, I think what you're referring to is who we met at the triple I conference and they talked about their surpluses. I mean, they, you know, don't quote me on this exactly, but a lot of, my understanding is a lot of their surplus was due to one-time items. And I'm okay with that, too. You know, we can figure, they delayed some things, so it's not like they eliminated a cost per se, but they said, well, we can, we can defer this to next year. And so this is a surplus. It's a cash flow issue. It's not a savings per se, but it's a cash flow issue. But nevertheless, it's, because the levy stays at where it is and it increases, they can certainly, you know, do it for next, do it next year and still have the funding for it. But at the same time, in this current year, because, right, time value money here, money today is worth a lot more than money tomorrow. And so if we can start cutting down the costs today and sending it back to our taxpayers, to our supporters, to our funders, really, I mean, I think we should do that.
We certainly do that. I think a great example of that is what we do with our facilities, where we're never interested in replacing something just because it's been X number of years and we replace it every X number of years. We actually only replace things, like, you know, when they actually need to be replaced, right?
So maybe not example, but what I'm saying is-
We absolutely do that. And I think I would defer to Dr. Hunt on, you know, what his team does in terms of looking for efficiencies in operations and are we frugal with the funds that the taxpayers have provided for us? So, Dr. Hunt, maybe you'd like to comment on that relative to your team.
Well, I haven't run an FTE count. I can just tell you, just in talking to folks, I have heard of significant reductions in terms of teaching staff and support and what our teachers used to have compared to what they have now. So I don't want to, you know, cast judgment on past boards or past administrations because I think some of that has been done. And certainly, yeah, we look at staffing, we continue, you know, we're, I'm still wrapping myself around how we serve students. May there be opportunities where we look at efficiencies? The answer is yes. Do I have those tonight? No.
No, I understand. And by the way, you know what, I've said this in the past and I will reiterate this, the teachers are one of our greatest assets in this, in this district. And frankly, I do look at some of the, I've heard some of the answers, or some of the responses from teachers that I've gotten to know over the years, and, yeah, they're, they don't have the resources they used to have. And I think that's actually a problem. I think we need to figure out how to get them resources, get them the ability to purchase schools, classroom supplies that they need, how to purchase books, how to pay the teachers who are truly doing the work. Because I, I will tell you, after doing remote learning with my daughter for a couple months, I can't be a teacher. And so God bless these men and women who do. So that's not my objective here. My objective here totally is to say, you know, you sit in these exec councils and you have a good understanding of this. And I get that our role here is to kind of oversee that. I don't know how, I don't know if I'm, I won't speak for anybody else here, I'll just say, I don't know that I am overseeing it to the best of my ability. And that's, and that's a problem that I have for myself.
I don't know exactly what to do to help you with that, quite honestly.
Yeah. So I guess, all right, so let's say that, you know, just being a fly on the wall is off the table. Is it, is, is your exec council something that you can share notes with us on or even allow us, again, observe? I mean, that, to me, you know, I can look through these actual financial statements for hours and hours and hours, and they tell me part of the story. To me, it's hearing the people who own that budget talk about why. And I can ask Dr. Vine and he can go and figure that out, too. But, you know, you talk about putting burdens on people. When you talk about a $50,000 check, Dr. Olson, it's like, okay, you have a $50,000 check that you just wrote. That's pretty much a rounding error for our district.
The most, a lot of that does come to you. I mean, Dr. Fuller was here presenting to this board on the device study and a recommendation on a lease and a continuation. on a lease and a continuation. Those are big dollars. Those things do come to you, and you, you see the due diligence that goes into evaluating and making those decisions. So I, I think at that level, a lot of things do come to this board and will over time with those large cost items.
I mean, every person that comes and presents to the board is, is telling you how they're spending their budget, essentially. Right? They're talking...
Oh, I mean, for that portion, yes.
Yeah? I mean, so, and those are all tied to the goals that this board has set for the administration.
I guess I still can't wrap my head around where we are just going as a district cost-wise. That, and I guess that's my ultimate hang-up here. It's, I don't know. I, maybe this is something that I can try and articulate better down the line, because we're not quite at the budget time right now, we're just trying to get this together. And, you know, as far as these numbers go, I mean, I don't, I don't have any strong objections to anything here. I mean, I understand how you did this. This is fantastic, actually, and very clear.
Let me ask this question. Are there any other questions regarding the recommendation to implement the, with the DCEB operating and fiscal '23? Any other questions around how we got here, and is everybody, and then secondarily, is everybody comfortable with an implementation of the budget this way?
You're talking about the pre-funding, right?
I'm sorry?
The pre-funding using DCEB.
Yes. Just, I'm going to call it the, the plan here that's entitled D7 Operating Fiscal Year '23, right?
I have one small question. It's a small question. Summer projects, like, I know we held back like last year because it was, you know, unpredictable, things were a little crazy, and now we're putting it back in, do we, for, you know, the next year and the next year? And Barry, you're probably going to be like, no, we need that summer money. I know, I can hear Penny saying it, too. Don't ask about the summer money. Can hear her in my head. But would we, would it be prudent to think about making that smaller for another year because this is such a spike coming up with this, you know, CPI spike? Is that a place that might make sense, or no?
I would tell you that I believe that with that model and the deficit that, the 280-whatever-thousand-dollar deficits on there, that I would recommend that we administratively manage that, and I think we can do that without affecting the, the summer project investment that, that we have. Because I think that, you know, that's a fairly important investment in our facilities that, you know, we, every year, we have many million, millions of dollars more of requests for work for summer projects than we're actually accomplishing. You know, that often is the first place that gets whacked, quite honestly. I, I think in a lot of places, and I tried to provide some information for the board to, to counsel you that we would prefer not to do that because we're already at the low end of reinvestment back into our facilities from a maintenance side. And I would tell you administratively, I believe that we can manage that kind of a deficit and work that, work that through. If we didn't think we could do that without hitting summer projects, I would come back to the board and have that conversation with you.
So, you know, I guess echo some of that. If you didn't get time to get through the memo regarding capital improvements and maintenance to understand costs, Dr. Vine in his office did a fabulous job. I asked, what should it cost? And there's always, it doesn't matter what school district you're in, there's always a gap. And it really gives you, kind of lays out what underfunding can do to you. If that deficit were to be in years, in out-years or, you know, larger, we, we would have to be having that conversation to some extent, or programming conversations. But I, I feel like the way the out-years look right now, and hopefully those assumptions hold true, I think we can navigate and still stay up with our, our summer, our summer projects.
Well, and I guess when I read it, I thought we're in a pretty good place. Like, I thought, you know, we analyzed, and we're, we're not as bad as we might have expected we would have been, and we're in pretty good, pretty good shape. So that's, you know, thank you for that work, too, though, because that's good work, and it's important. And that's part of your financial stability program for us, which I think is a good thing all around, all the things you've told us tonight. So, okay.
I think it's a good lead-in for my next question, which is, Leah, like, so we've got the, the summer projects in here. This, this projection is based upon the assumptions that are here. So does anybody have any assumptions that they would like to go through? I mean, in the past, we've gone through line by line, we can do that tonight, and just double-check that the board is okay with each one of these assumptions? Is there any one of them that, that anyone has a question on? I think I may, I think most of mine have been answered throughout the conversation.
Mine were, too. The presentation kept hitting them all.
Excellent. That's what I try to do.
Do we, do we want to go through these line by line, board? Just to make sure we all under, you know, does anybody have any input?
If there, if there's an assumption change that the board would like to see modeled, I can, I can do that.
I mean, I think we all know. My only, I, I'm going to have a hard time with a 5% levy, but I think I've made that pretty clear.
Well, unless we want to look at a different model, you know, we're heading, you know, we're heading in that direction, right?
Well, and, and certainly, you know, as we've done in the past, you know, I've, I've provided, you know, for the board, at least a couple times, I think, over the last several years, that if there was something, you want to see what something else looked like, I can model that and have Dr. Hunt shed that back out with the, with the board so that you can see what that impact looks like.
Want to see that, Katie?
I mean, if, if, I might be the only one who has a problem with that. I mean, I think, I think a 5% tax levy is a lot to ask of people, given the situation we've been in over the last couple of years, too. So I, I mean, that just sounds brutal to me. But that might just be me.
How else would we capture CPI, though, with that, that 5% cap?
Part of me.
How else would we capture CPI, though?
We don't have, I mean, that's, that's, that's the point. We don't have to, and then we have to build a different budget, which he's already explained, carries out over five, I get, compounds year for year, so I understand. I, it's just, I still...
Well, I guess maybe a different way of attacking it, Katie, would be, we can certainly model the revenue to include the CPI increase, but can we somehow, you know, reduce the cost side of it so that the expense load doesn't grow at 5%?
I think it's really difficult to do that without understanding what you're going to reduce.
Sure.
Right? So you, what I would recommend is that we model it with, with a change in the revenue so you can see what will happen. And then it'll give you an idea...
Might be helpful for the community also.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's fair. And then we could see what the variance is.
I didn't hear Katie.
I said it might be helpful for the community to see also.
And I think that's, I think that's fair, and I don't think that's too much of an ass task.
No, it's no problem. So, so, Board, I would just ask you, do you want to see that at one year of zero, where it's a flat? Or do you want to see a 2.5% or a 4%? What's meaningful for you in, in taking a look at that?
Can we just see one year of zero? Is that a kind of answer to the question of what the...
We can see what we're all in.
Well, I agree with you.
Is it too much to ask to do a zero and then half of CPI for 2024?
No problem.
A zero and a half, half, is that, is that good sensitivity?
Yep.
Everybody okay? I just want to, I'm looking for nods, or...
So, Board members, what I would provide back for you, and ask Dr. Hunt to, to get, you know, to push back out for you, would be, you would see the same model that you have today. I would give you another one that would have a CPI for next year at 2.5% and another one that we would have a CPI for next year at zero. The other assumptions would remain the same.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Just confirming that's...
To be clear, DCEB borrowing?
Yeah, for next year.
For next year?
Mm-hmm.
Just so it's apples to apples.
So we're going to compare those two to the DCEB fiscal year '23 model, right? We're going to do it on that model. So all the other assumptions stay the same, except for the one CPI.
Did you remind me, Dave, where the CPI projections for, for future years, where do we pull that from? Like, the 2.5%?
So, you know, the...
I just wonder, like, what if it's like 5% again next year?
Right, right. So, right, so here's what hap, here, so I can describe to you, so I'm just looking at what the, sort of the target rate for, from the Fed is, you know, longer-term target rate. If, if we assume a higher CPI in future years, the, the question will be, what impact will that have on expenses? So, you know, then we have to take a look at, okay, do we need to change expense assumptions? And you can see that I've modeled a lot of things where CPI is driving what our expense structure is. So I would probably have those move pretty similarly. You know, and I think that, you know, the challenge for this next year is 7% CPI and revenue capped at, at 5. So if we were to do that, there's a gap between the 5 and the 7, and so we will have costs that will go up more akin to CPI, but we won't have revenue that goes up that way, right? And that's, so that, that's structured within the tax cap law to try and keep property taxes from, from going up without limit, which has been the, sort of the practice prior to that, where school boards could set whatever increase they wanted on an annual basis. So...
Are we projecting 2.5%? Because it's kind of mid-range then, between the cap?
You know, a lot of supplies and materials and things go up by, you know, do go up by CPI or around there. Some of our larger expenses don't always take transportation, for example. So, you know, it really varies based on what it is, but it seems like CPI is, when you're doing large-scale modeling, seems like a reasonable assumption. And, you know, there's the ability to do some sensitivity testing on that, to take a look at it. And, you know, simply, you know, easy way to do it is, you know, take a look at, what's our spend on supplies, what's our spend on materials? What's a 1% change do, right? That's sort of what I did with, you know, the salary number for you. Okay, 1% change in salaries, it's driving, you know, a million dollars of, of expense, maybe a little bit less than that, so, yeah. And unfortunately, salaries and benefits making up about three-quarters of our overall spend, like, that's, that drives, you know, what, what happens with the budget. And so when you, you know, when you work on the remaining quarter of our expense, if you want to have a big impact on the budget overall, you have to make huge changes on the 25% that's left, right? And even some of those items aren't, you know, they're very difficult to, to change. So, you know, something like our property casualty liability insurance, which is growing faster than CPI, maybe not faster than 7%, I haven't seen our numbers for this next year yet, but there have been some big increases on, on that, that we've been talking about within the click pool. Well, we can't exactly not have that, right? So you're, you know, and we're buying it at an extremely effective price because we're banded together with a couple hundred or school districts to enhance purchasing power, so...
Suppose even if that number's higher in the future, it doesn't affect our modeling for the coming fiscal year? So, yeah, but I'm hoping it's not 5% again.
Yep, yeah.
Other question. Can you remind us what year the new teacher contract will go into effect on here? Because that's an unpredictable thing, too, right?
Right, so our current contract with our VA partners goes for one more year, so it goes through the '22, '23 school year. That's the fiscal '23 year. And then a new contract would start for the '23, '24 school year, which is fiscal '24, FY '24.
You know, real quickly, actually, you had indicated that the $18 million numbers with fiscal '23 and going forward was based on a, was based on a study that you had done of new construction historically? Is that the median, or is it the average, or is that just kind of like a ballpark?
It's, it's close, it's close to the average. I mean, there, there's some odd fluctuations that have happened, especially when you go back, you know, a decade. And there clearly are some things that are happening where we had, I think we had one year that probably had $40 million worth of new construction. But, you know, I suspect that was something that the business manager at the time had a conversation with the board about, something happening. You know, we'll have a TIF district that'll roll off coming up in the next couple of years. That's going to change our new construction number a little bit for that one year, you know, that'll pop up a little bit. You know, for planning purposes, I think this is a pretty reasonable number, as I've looked at the history close to, around the average. But, you know, I, I looked at, well, what if I exclude this one that's really wonky high, or this one that's really wonky low? It's not driving huge dollars on the budget one way or the other, Steve.
Just going to ask you, so if you took it down back to 15, how much would it take off of the top?
A $100,000 or something. I don't know. I have to do the, I have to do the math to tell you.
But it's not substantial.
It's, it's not.
All right.
Board members, I, I think I heard my marching orders from you. Unless there are other questions, I'm going to use the restroom, and I will get that information back to you.
I was going to ask if we needed to take just a five-minute quick break. Is everybody okay? Do we need to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so come back a quarter after. Can we try to come back a quarter after? Okay. I think everybody would be more comfortable.
I think everybody would be more comfortable.
(laughing).
One agenda item left, which is to discuss, are we good? Are we rolling? Are we?
Do we need Janine?
Okay, thank you. I think we might need Janine, but all of us can have our board ducks up. We can look and see what the agenda items are for February 1st.
Yes.
The revised calendar, the transportation contracts, student fees, one world leases, easement, first reading of board policies, SEL data, and the Hart Road property proposal. Oh, sorry, those were first reading of board policies is for discussion. The SEL data and the Hart Road property. I'm going to attempt to channel Angela here, and I don't see our discussion on a mitigation matrix on here. Are you, Dr. Hunt, are you ready? Will you be ready on Tuesday to discuss that with us?
Yes.
Okay. Based upon the criteria that we talked about in our last meeting?
Yes.
So we could add that to our agenda on February 1st.
Well, okay, so we're not willing to meet before Tuesday?
I was trying to get to that.
Oh, sorry.
So I think then in the, so we've got a potential ruling that could happen on Friday, just like it could have happened on the last Friday. And so Dr. Hunt did send out a communication to the community that talked about what happens if the mandates are overruled. And then your letter also talked about what if they're not overruled, right? I think the one scenario that's not in this letter is what if the governor's mandate is overruled and we have local control?
Yeah, so I had written that as well, and essentially the way I wrote that was, you know, we would remain masked and the board would address it at the February 1st meeting. That was the, kind of the message that if something came out last Friday.
So that's the admin's plan right now, is if we do get local control and the governor's order is found to be unlawful, we would basically remain with, your plan would be to remain with the mitigations that we currently have in place Monday and Tuesday.
To be clear, if it's, the governor's order is unlawful at the state level, but local control, if it's unlawful at the state level and determined that we don't have local control of that decision, we would have to move to mask recommended, not required.
Yes. And you did outline that in your letter.
Correct.
Unless there was a stay.
There's a lot of what ifs, yeah.
There's a lot of what ifs.
All right.
But I think the one what if that isn't, wasn't directly in the letter was if we're allowed local control. So what would we do? What would this board want to do? And if your plan was to remain with the mitigations we currently have in place until we discussed on Tuesday, I personally am fine with supporting that plan. I'm not sure if all of us are, or enough of us are, but if we are all comfortable with that plan, then I'm not sure we would need to have another meeting based upon the rulings that happened on Friday.
Personally, I feel we've known this litigation's out there for a long time. We've known that this is a possibility. We've, I've been asking over and over again to have a plan put in place. We've been going back and forth on what metrics we want involved in that plan, and I feel we owe it to our community to be proactive for once instead of reactive. I feel like we are constantly being reactive.
I don't see a lot of difference, though, between us meeting on Sunday to talk about it and then talking about it in our regular meeting on Tuesday.
Both of you are talking at the same time.
So I was just saying, I don't see a big difference between us just waiting until our regular meeting on Tuesday to address it and then having to, like, try to pull everybody together for a special meeting on Sunday. It doesn't seem like two days is a big difference to me.
Not to you, but it may be to a child who's been dying to get their mask off for this entire year, so.
We've been, the plan that we've been talking about all along, right, is one that I think Dr. Hunt would bring to us on Thursday, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, working in the criteria that we voted on. So I think it sounds like we-
We don't even know what that criteria is at this point. We could already be meeting the criteria. What are the four criteria?
In December, we did kind of vote up and down criteria, so I think he has some guidance for-
I have vaccination rate, hospitalization, capacity, vaccination availability, and building transmission. Those were the four that were voted on.
Of course, we, I mean, I thought there was some discussion on whether or not we were going to use vaccination rate plus natural immunity, and if that was even possible to do, which I said it was.
And then we got a memo from the administration that said there's no way they were going to be able to do natural immunity, that there was no way they're going to be able to figure that out. I mean, that was the memo we got, so I don't think there was any-
Well, there's a way, it just required a great deal, it required staffing.
And the recommendation was not to-
Correct.
Okay.
Well, then I think we owe, given the percentage of those immunized amongst our students, we're never going to get masks off these kids if you guys are going to use that as a criteria, and people deserve to know that.
What was the last number we had?
What are we not going to do? If the community numbers go down and the hospitalization numbers go down?
No, we're going to use vaccination rates as a criteria.
Well, hold on, Katie. We use vaccination rates, but we didn't set a level, did we?
You did not set a level.
You didn't set a level.
So, I mean-
So we need a conversation about the level, a vaccination rate, and we need a conversation about building transmission.
Dr. Hunt, I don't know if I can use the number you shared with us, but there's a, we have a number, at least a draft one, right, or a preliminary one, as of a certain date.
We had one in December.
Vaccination rates?
Yeah.
Vaccination update, yeah, in the last superintendent's day.
I'm just trying to make sure, I don't want to use a pronoun, I want to make sure I understand what you're talking about.
And I don't want to say it out loud, because I assume this is something that you shared with us, but, I mean, as the rest of the board that's here, I mean, are we prepared to set a benchmark, or no? I mean, because I'm with Katie, I don't want to necessarily use it, but if we're overruled, or at least two of us are overruled and we need to use it, do we have a number in mind?
Vaccination rate?
Correct.
I mentioned last meeting that I thought we have to decide if it's, is it going to be like, we must have this minimum before it comes into effect, or is it going to be that we have to have so many vaccinated before we can remove a mitigation?
Right.
And that would be the discussion that we would have on Tuesday in earnest, based upon whatever-
Can we have it?
I would not recommend you have this tonight without this being on the agenda. So I think the decision is, do you want to have a special meeting? If so, when would that be? Or do we want to have this conversation on Tuesday night? I can be prepared either way.
So you're saying you can be prepared by Sunday?
Yes.
I think that there's so much COVID in the community that I don't know that it's time to unmask, even if we do vote on a when it's time to unmask situation if we have local control. So I don't know that it's going to change, if it's Sunday or Tuesday, what the board will say about, you know, unmasking, because there's so much COVID. We're at a high point in COVID right now, like-
But we aren't within our schools, so the board, and what, the board has to set criteria, which we need to-
Hospitalization was one of the ones that we talked about, and we're pretty high right now, is my understanding.
I mean, the majority of our local hospitals aren't even doing elective surgeries right now, so I think that, I don't, I don't necessarily think that that bodes well to go to a situational masking right now, like, within these two days.
This decision might be out of our hands in a few days anyway, so.
It might be.
It could be, yeah, yeah. There's so many unknowns, yeah.
So I've run a proposal that we agree that we stay with the mitigations we have in place in the, in the event that it's ruled that we have local control and we have a full discussion on Tuesday night, when we have all, when Dr. Hunt is ready and we have all the staff here.
I'm fine with that.
Well, can I, can, Dr., I'm sorry, can you clarify? I thought I read something, but I, I'm sorry, Sandra, I thought I heard you say something else. Is the district's recommendation, or, I don't know, if I should say this is a district's mandate then, assuming local control is returned, that we make masks suggested? Is that what I heard? Or are we going to make masks required?
Where we left it in December was, if we have local control, there were criteria the board wanted in place to monitor for when we would move to either situational or recommended, not required.
Understood. But we don't have that in place, so what happens Monday and Tuesday, up ahead of our board meeting?
If you have, if we have local control on Monday and Tuesday, my assumption would be we would go with what we, what we have been doing and approve the criteria and then implement it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So to clarify then, our current protocol is children need to be in masks regardless of vaccination status, and then we will decide on Tuesday evening in earnest what criteria needs to be met.
That's my understanding.
Masking, and I use some quarantining, I mean, all those discussions should be part of the, those criteria should be part of that.
I'm with Katie. I know it's two days, and I know that seems very, you know, I will fly back early so that we have this meeting. I do think we owe it to our, to everyone here, especially the parents, you know, we had 10 or 12 folks here today talking about it. I mean, I don't want to be here on Sunday any more than you do, and I will leave where I'm going early to come back for a meeting if, if-
I don't see how we would deviate from a plan that we have already been moving forward on, though.
We have a plan.
What I'm saying is we can set the, we can set the meeting.
We have, we had tasked Dr. Hunt and the executive council with developing a plan and had four criteria that we voted on, so I think we're waiting, and I think Dr. Hunt is saying that, you know, by Tuesday, he'll have something to show us.
He's saying he'd have it done by Sunday.
I think we're putting people, and I think we're going to have an awkward couple days if local control is given back and we just move on.
So if he has it done by Sunday, we would-
Implement it this evening and have-
And that implementation could very well be, hey, we don't meet the numbers to go situational, we're going to stay mask required for now, I mean, which would be the same as Tuesday. So you're saying that you want to meet two days beforehand to decide the same thing we would decide to do?
I'm actually saying we should have had this plan ready to go, knowing that this legislation, that this was happening and a verdict was imminent.
The only difference is that we would see the plan two days earlier if we met, if we had a special meeting Sunday.
Yeah, and I do think that two days is not to be scoffed at. I mean, Katie's right, there have been parents who have been talking to all of us for months.
We got 30, 40 emails today alone saying mask choice, mask choice, mask choice.
But what if that plan, like, what if the criteria on that plan dictates that for now we should stay masked? Then nothing would change.
They're not, I mean, the sooner we give them an answer, the better, and like I said, I, I'm-
We can give them an answer tonight. I mean, I don't want to, if everybody wants to meet on Sunday, we can do that, make our meeting on Tuesday night likely shorter, right? But we can give an answer right now. I think, I think we could, I think we'd have people that would agree that that's, we'll just, if that particular ruling comes down where we have local control, we would stay as we are right now until we have the discussion on Tuesday.
What guarantee, I mean, I'm not too, but I'm sorry, we've had this discussion over and over and over again, how do we know we're going to come out of Tuesday with an actual plan? Are we, are we vowing to do that this time?
It's the same thing about Sunday too, though, Katie.
This has, we have to at some point sit down and hammer this out and give these parents something. I mean, they just, like, these parents deserve, this is, I just, I can't believe we don't have one ready to go already, like, so this, I just feel like we're spinning around.
I think we're pretty close. It's not like we're starting from scratch. I, you know, my big worry is if the judge comes back and says, nobody has control, it's, and it's fine if you want to say it's the parental choice, I think there's going to be chaos in the schools on Monday.
I disagree with that at all, and I think-
Total chaos in the schools.
I think there's going to be chaos in the schools either way if we don't have something to get something for parents.
And I think another factor that no one's taking into account is, we can schedule this for Sunday, but if the judgment comes down where we don't have local control, we can just cancel the meeting, can't we? Is there, so we can cancel it Sunday?
That's correct.
Or Friday, doesn't matter.
Correct.
I think it's about getting-
You may not have a ruling on Friday.
You may not even have a ruling.
You may have nothing, you're right, totally.
I don't know that it's fair to the administration to have a meeting Sunday that goes till 10 o'clock at night and say, okay, now you have to implement this tomorrow, and let the whole community know, you know, at 10 o'clock at night on a Sunday, because I know how these meetings go, that's going to be a long meeting, there's going to be a lot of people. We may or may not agree, and I, I think it's kinder to decide tonight where we're at and say we're going to discuss it Tuesday, if we can, if we have people who can agree on listening to what Dr. Hunt is recommending in this what if, what if, what if situation if we have local control. I think that's kinder to the community.
Well, I mean-
And we don't know that, there could be a ruling like this on Friday that gives districts local control, and then there could be a stay over the weekend or on Monday, and that could change things, too. And then we can meet on Sunday, and then what if there's a stay that's issued on Monday, and then we have this giant meeting, and then, but then, because of the stay, we have to go mask required.
A stay is very unlikely, like, that's very-
This is what happened in New York. The New York ruling came down yesterday, and then today there was a stay issued, and so they're back to, you know, masking in all of their schools. So I think it's a very likely scenario that if the judge were to overrule the mandate, there would be a stay.
Well, I guess if we're going to get the same results Sunday, I guess I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, is, and perhaps we can't vote per se, but are we in a position where we're saying that mitigations will just be status quo regardless of the outcome? Well, I won't say regardless, but assuming, no, you're shaking me up, no.
If the judge rules that school districts cannot require masking on Friday-
Right, then, of course.
Yeah.
But assuming, what if, right, local control is granted, does it, am I hearing correctly that?
I would, my, I would communicate that this is the ruling, the Board of Education will meet on Tuesday evening to review, you know, protocols, to evaluate reduction in mitigations, and until that meeting, we will remain universally masked.
So that's the outcome that we're going to get on Sunday? Is that, is that, is that what the rest of the board is, you know, agreeing to?
Likely, given where we are with the hospitalization, I mean, just look at hospitalization alone, which is one of the criteria. I think it's likely something could change.
So then, yeah, I guess what we're saying is, whether we have the meeting Sunday or today, it sounds like-
They're Tuesday, you mean?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The majority here wants to keep mitigations pretty much status quo, at least for Monday and Tuesday, and ahead of the meeting.
Four people that would support that? I think I've counted one, two, three, four.
I mean, understand.
I'll make sure I voice Angela's opinion would be she'd like to meet on Sunday, right? I promised her I would voice that.
I actually would like to look into, because I don't know how many board beamers actually need to take to call a special meeting, I'm not sure that it's the majority, but I can look into it after.
Well, but I think, but I think what I'm saying, Katie, is that even if we do meet on Sunday, the outcome is kind of already decided, that we're going to, you know-
Well, not on our end, but yes.
Not on our end, correct, but the majority of the board will rule that, well-
Well, I think maybe it's good for parents to hear that, too. So there we go. Welcome to Tuesday.
So we're leaving here, and we are going, you're going to make a communication on Friday, should the ruling be that we have local control. I want to ensure that's clear.
Right.
You would communicate that that's, that's what we're- Everybody can listen to it now, but-
I will communicate regardless of the ruling. I mean, a communication will go out.
Fair enough. That sounds fair enough. Okay. Are there any other items that people would have liked to see on the agenda for February 1st?
I think we talked about having, talking about having some kind of referendum town hall or update, and like, thinking about when that makes sense to be, or am I, did we talk about that?
We had conversations, and I think we talked about, after we get the final high school bid in, we would go ahead and plan something like that, so we're working through that now in terms of the bids.
Okay.
So I think when the board, you know, approves the bid, we know exactly what it's going to look like, we would do something like that.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing else? We have on our agenda to go into close, would anybody like to motion that we need to go into close for the purpose of discussing, I'm going to read them, employment matters, performance of a specific employee, collective negotiating matters, litigation matters, security procedures, student disciplinary matters, and the purchase lease, sale price of real property. Do we have a motion? Does anybody want to go into close session?
Do you have anything to share with us?
I do not. I do not.
I just had a question around the email, I think it could be so brief, but just over the communication we received, it was so confusing.
The intention was to provide you an update on that email enclosed on Tuesday.
Closed on Tuesday, okay. Yeah, then if that's the case, then we'll get it mentioned.
Okay, that's fine, just want to make sure that the opportunity was given.
I'm sorry, Sandra, can I actually rewind for a second? I don't need to go into close, but I do need to ask a question about the meeting on February 1st. We had initially said that we might want to meet early that day for, yeah, for training.
Yeah.
It was canceled.
It was canceled. I'm not sure, maybe you-
I thought we moved that to the 15th?
We tried to move to 15th, but we know it can't happen on the 15th either, so I think you're going to, you're going to ask everybody for the first, March 1st, to see if everybody could make it.
March 1st, okay. So then, there's Dr. By, there's-
Did I get that right?
So we can, so we're good for February 1st?
Maybe not good for March.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking.
Thank you.
Finest committee is what I'm getting at.
All right. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Or what are we, confident, no, we don't have to be confident, it's not a regular meeting, sorry. Your motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Hi.
And again, Dave, thank you.